Fantastic. Welcome, it's called the order of the regular meeting for August 13th. Thank you, we were a little bit concerned, we didn't have anybody in the audience. Somebody wasn't coming to our party tonight. We have, we'll start tonight, as we always do, with commissioners' reports. Mr. Mitchell, would you go first?
Opening my bottleboard. Right, the Parks and Rec Board met sometime mid-July, and we talked quite a bit about the activity around, surrounding our trails. And part of the dialogue was to remind us that the trails are the number one amenity, the number one recreational amenity that members of our community want us to invest in. The staff also reminded us that the greatest ROI on our trails would be to develop trails that allow for local travel from point A to point B, whether it be going to school, going to work, things like that. But also then incorporate recreational activity and tourism. To that end, there was quite a bit of discussion about the Meadow Creek Trail System and the greenway associated with the Giant Development that we talked about maybe three months ago. If you remember, there was a developer that was looking to develop the Giant area that runs near the trail, and the developer was looking to make an investment in the trails to help us with that. That has since been tabled, but the Parks and Rec staff, as well as the, as the board would like us to just be sensitive to the need to get that developed. Parks and Rec will do it on its own if it must, but it would be wonderful to partner with anyone who might want to develop the area behind whatever happens with the Giant Lot. We also got a pretty comprehensive update on the aquatics works that we've got by Philip C. Just a couple of fun facts. We get nearly 100,000 visits to our aquatic facilities a year. We teach about 1,200 people how to swim every year. We've got, at peak season, we've got about 180 people that work for Parks and Rec. And we do, we do a lot of really fun stuff, swim lessons I already talked about, the Red Cross lifeguard training we do, quite a few fitness classes. You guys have seen the lumberjacks who get on the logs and do the rolling. We actually do that in our Parks and Rec facilities, and that's like a big attraction. Folks really like that. And the thing that I like most is the pups in the pool that we do. I think, I think we do about once a month, we just open it up to local pups and they just come out and have fun. So, those guys are just doing a lot of really neat and a lot of fun stuff.
I hope it's once a month. My dogs really enjoy it, but it's usually at the end of the season when they do it.
Yeah, maybe, but I thought it was a little more frequent.
It does attract a lot of, a lot of dogs.
We, we saw little videos of, clips of that, and it's, yeah, it looks like a lot of fun.
Yep, thank you. Is that all? Okay.
All right, so I have two reports from this month. On, let's see, July 16th, we had an MPO Technical Committee meeting where we discussed primarily the hydraulic road intersection and the three different options for that. And so, we're starting to get settled on what might be the solution that we shoot for, but it is starting to seem that it's getting rather urgent that we use that big pot of money that's left over from the other 29 projects and put it into something before it disappears. Separately, on the 8th of August, we had a Police Committee meeting where we heard about the upcoming participatory budgeting sessions or program that will be run for the benefit of the Ridge Street neighborhood starting in just a few months now, over the course of the next year, to decide how $100,000 allocated by council will be spent on a capital improvements project to help the neighborhood.
Can I ask you a question about the MPO? Since we didn't get smart scale funding for that intersection, this is the $18 million left over from the RIO and the study and...
Yeah, it's RIO, and I think it might actually be left over from two different ones.
Two different projects.
Yeah, it's the General 29 Solutions pot.
Okay. Are they going to resubmit for smart scale?
Yeah, that's the goal.
Okay.
Or revenue sharing, yeah. But I think regardless, the city slash county will have to put up a fair amount of money, possibly splitting between us, since it'll be probably running from Zan Road to maybe Lennox over by BJ's sort of.
Thank you. Mr. He.
I attended the July meeting of the Thomas Jefferson Planning District CTAC meeting. I had, I had to arrive late, but they went on, we had to have a quorum, so I arrived in time to help complete the quorum, and we added new members at that meeting. They continue to look for some additional citizens to serve on that board. And of course, the Unity Days committees met frantically throughout the month, and there's a meeting tomorrow night.
Are Unity Days complete? What is, I heard there's something going on the rest of the month.
They'll be on until August and September.
Right.
And there's no end in sight, it'll be unity forever.
But there's a concert specifically next weekend, right?
Oh yeah, there's all kind of. So, and tomorrow night's going to be doing some evaluation over how the weekend went.
Great, thank you. Ms. Dow.
I'm Liddy, and I don't have anything to report.
So, yes.
The Barracks Road slash Emmett Street Improvement Project Steering Committee met for the first time on July 25th and discussed how to frame a survey soliciting public input, whether and how to make bicycling safe in the corridor, surprisingly contentious, and how to calm traffic, manage congestion, and preserve trees. The Housing Advisory Committee Planning Subcommittee met August 9th to discuss housing affordability impacts of the Standards and Design Manual, focusing on street widths and clear zone spatial requirements and concrete material requirements, which can combine to raise the cost of new housing construction. We requested more clarity on what is required by state code, requested checking requirements against NACTO requirements, which is more appropriate for cities, and suggested more staff flexibility to permit more affordable housing.
Thank you.
And last but not least, so I attended two committee meetings over, since the last time we met. The first one, the Board of Architectural Review on July 16th. We approved seven Certificate of Appropriateness applications for projects. Two were deferred, and then lastly, the BAR guidelines are still being reviewed and edited, updated at work sessions by the BAR members, and it's open to the public on the third Thursday of the month. The next meeting is this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:30 in the NDS Conference Room. The Tree Commission met just last week, August 6th. We had updates from several Tree Commission members who serve on steering committees for Fontaine Avenue, for the East High Street Streetscape Study, and Barracks-Emmett Streetscape Study. And we are, of course, monitoring those studies and looking to, to make an impact, at least to, well, to represent our concerns. And then lastly, we spent a lot of time expressing frustration over a downtown urban, large urban project that has been submitting site plans since last October, and our city urban forester and the site, and the Tree Commission have been asking to review these plans without any luck. And the last site plan has been submitted, and unfortunately, several large, important trees are going to be taken down that we've had absolutely no input on. And, and we're just trying to reconcile that with our mandate from City Council in our bylaws, which is to stay informed about local changes and intentions involving trees and plans for public lands and infrastructure in the city, advocate for trees before City Council and the Planning Commission. Thank you, more on that later. I'm digging into the details, and I will hopefully have something to report next month.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, University Report. Are we getting ramped back up?
Sure, yeah, I don't really have anything to report. I'm actually back to work after being on parental leave for about the last two months.
Well, congratulations.
So, maybe next time I'll have a little more.
Wonderful. I missed my TJPDC meeting on August 1st, and I was on vacation, and I have to be honest with you, I didn't even look to see what was on the agenda, so my apologies. That's the first time I've ever done that, but it was a wonderful family vacation. And so, I have nothing to report on that. I do have to report that we do have a nominating committee that will be making a recommendation for the new chair in September, and vice-chair in September. Mr. Leandro and Mr. Sully Yates have agreed to be this committee, and so I look forward to the recommendations and seeing where my chair will be after this is over. Literal, physical seat.
We at least know two members who aren't going to be the Chair or Vice-Chair.
And two are ineligible. Wow.
No, actually, no, everyone is eligible to be Chair or Vice-Chair. Only members of, well, no, I think you're right. Only members who've been on the commission for more than a year are eligible to be on the nominating committee, per the bylaws.
Oh, well then I can nominate you.
Can the nominating committee nominate themselves?
That has happened in the past.
Yes, it has.
They're no longer on the commi, commission. Anyway. But that's all I have to report. But I am going to just say one quick thing that I hope Ms. Creasy reports on, is I saw some rumored emails that something's happening at the Belmont Bridge. I mean, say it's not so, it's only been, what, 10 years?
I think it may actually really happen. No, it's the announcement that Ms. Janacek sent out to let people know about the upcoming events concerning the bridge. And so, yes, things are moving forward.
Hang on, let her do the report, and you come up and tell us about it, because I am super interested about the Belmont Bridge. Can you do that for me? All right, Ms. Creasy.
Okay, well before, before Alex comes up and talks with us, just a few announcements on upcoming events that we get to be a part of. This Thursday, we have a joint work session with City Council on the Form Based Code. The consultants are coming back to talk with both groups concerning, moving forward with that. And so you all have received some materials on that. That meeting is from 6 to 8, and it is at CitySpace. On August 27th, we have a preliminary work session with one of our applicants. The application's 240 stripling. Because we anticipate public interest, we have reserved the Water Street Center for that. And that meeting will be from 5 to 7, the Water Street Center on August 27th. And on September 4th, make sure to pencil this in, you'll probably ink it in very, very soon, but there's a meeting concerning the Standards and Design Manual. If you all recall, there was a request last time, staff brought it forward to council for additional discussion with groups, as well as review of comments, and then to hold a joint discussion with Planning Commission, City Council, representatives of a number of different community groups, including the cadre group, to talk through next steps for moving that forward. And then after that, there will be public discussions.
And the date on that again?
September 4th. And they are, let's see, if I wrote this one. It is, I believe it's, I don't know if we have the set time yet. It's either 6 to 8 or 5 to 7. And I know that location is still pending, that's why it's still penciled. But as soon as we have more information, we'll have that up on the meeting website, so that folks have that.
That's a Wednesday, so that's not our typical Tuesday.
Correct.
And that's CitySpace.
Maybe, probably.
Okay.
I will, I will get more specifics on that, but that's more of a, that is coming. And then we have our regular, go back to our regular September meetings. September will be our annual meeting, so of course elections are held, and that's pretty much what we do at our annual meeting for the most part. Also want to put a bug in you guys' ear. You all had noted that once you change leadership and we kind of know where we are with some of the other projects that'll be coming our way that Mr. Icufuno will speak to in a second, that you all were interested in having a retreat of some sort. So, I will leave that to you all to discuss. It may end up being that whoever the new leadership is works with me through details. That's usually how these things happen, but that's something to just keep, keep in your mind. And we'll work towards that, unless you all don't want to, and then we won't. So, I think that's all I have. Now Alex has some things to share as well.
Alex, please, please tell us about this Belmont Bridge. Belmont, are you listening?
Good evening, Commissioners. First, at your last meeting, you know, you asked me to provide an update on the comprehensive plan update.
Okay.
And the GRFP is closing on August 16th, and Proposal Analysis Group has been set up. This is driven by Assistant City Manager, Mr. Murphy. There will be 11 persons on this proposal advisory, proposal analysis group. And the proposal analysis group essentially will review the proposals submitted by various consultants and makes selection. And the composition of that includes two from CLIC. CLIC is an organization affiliated with the Legal Aid Center. And there will be two members of the Planning Commission, and a representative from cadre, which is essentially a combination of business and development community. And there will be two persons from HAC. No one from other group can be on HAC. In other words, you can be a member of the Planning Commission, and you are on HAC, and you are representing HAC. You know, so, and then there will be four representatives from the city, you know, city staff, that will make it 11. These individuals will review the proposals and then work with the procurement office to select a consultant that will do this project. And the other question that Madam Chair asked me to look into was the fate of the long-range planner. And the city manager has put that on hold until he finishes the reorganization, so he will decide whether to move forward with that or not. In the meantime, once the selection of a consultant to help the city in terms of preparing the update of the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and appropriate housing strategy, when the decision is made in terms of who's going to be the consultant, then staff will be working with, with that consultant along perhaps with the Planning Commission until the city manager makes a decision as to whether we need to move forward with her in the long-range plan. So that's, that's my update on that. If you have any question, I'd be glad to take your question, or else I'll move on to the next item, which is Belmont Bridge. All right? Okay.
Procedural question. What is the backup plan? If we don't have staffing to do this, how do we do it?
Well, NDS staff and the Planning Commission will be moving forward with the project, with the consultant. We have several projects. I think NDS has a wealth of knowledge in terms of coordinating the activities of consultants, so we figure out how to move the project forward.
Thank you.
Regarding Belmont Bridge, I think in the past year or year and a half or so, we've been providing a quarterly update to the Planning Commission and City Council. You got, in the past couple of weeks, or two, two or three weeks ago, you got an update. The same update I sent to the City Council, I sent to the Planning Commission. However, I did not share, the Belmont Bridge is moving forward. We have, in the past 30 days, requested and received authorization from Virginia Department of Transportation to move forward with ride-of-way acquisition. That is a major milestone. And that milestone was contingent upon the approval of Stage 1 bridge design. Without that, they wouldn't have authorized the, provided the authority to proceed with the ride-of-way acquisition. So we've started the work on ride-of-way acquisition, and we are moving forward with Phase 2 bridge design. And once we complete the Phase 2 bridge design, it goes back to a VDOT again. They will review it, and then if everything is ready and ready to go, and hopefully by next summer, if we complete, complete the ride-of-way acquisition by next summer, late fall of next year, we'll be able to bid the project out.
Sounds fantastic. I can't wait.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, so I noticed in the update that you guys were seeking a, like a waiver or permit from the Buckingham Branch Railway to remove the fences?
Yeah, we are coordinating that with the city authorities office, has been very gracious.
Does that mean the fences will be gone forever, or just like during construction? Or is it just fences around the bridge?
We still have to have some kind of fence, you know. Because railroad, as much as possible, they try to keep people away from their track. But they've been very cooperative in terms of working with us, and the city attorney Lisa in particular has been very helpful in terms of helping us to draft the legal agreement between the railroad company.
Any more questions? Thank you, Alex. At this time, we are at the, part of the Agenda for Matters to be presented by the public, not on the formal agenda. So we do have two public hearings tonight. One is about a special use permit on West Main Street. You will have an opportunity to speak on that, at that time during that public hearing. The second one is on a zoning text amendment regarding access for dwelling units, more than, more than 50 dwelling units. You'll have an opportunity to speak during that public hearing. So if you'd like to speak about anything else at this time that's not on the formal agenda, now is the time to do so. So I'll open Matters to be Presented by the Public. And we have one person signed up. Mr. Tubbs.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak today. Sean Tubbs, PMI Environmental Council. I'm here tonight to talk about transit. Earlier this year, I made the decision to try to avoid driving within the city of Charlottesville. I live a mile and a half away from where I work, and I decided it was really silly for me to drive that little bit, because for years I thought that the Charlottesville area transit system wouldn't work for me. I had that in my mind, that was definitely the thing. But then I realized I had to challenge myself, and I've got my commute down to 20 minutes from one, from my door, straight from my door to my stop. I got coffee, so it kind of slows things down. Now, I know that doesn't work for everybody, especially for those in the, in the urban ring. And so I think it's important to realize that we can make, we can make vast improvements if we work together. And there is such a body that is helping us to do that right now. It's the Regional Transit Partnership. And I'm here tonight to just kind of try to raise the profile. You guys gave a lot of committee reports earlier, and this is just a small one there. So many of our planning objectives call for us to reduce the number of people who drive to work alone. I was one of those people. But to get there, we're going to need options. Part of that is biking, and of course BEC is working on that, and walking. But transit, I think, is something, especially for those areas in the urban ring and the outlying counties. We have three transit, we have three transit agencies in this community, and it's been fantastic, both as a reporter before and now as an advocate, to sort of see how this group is coming together. To get the improvements we need faster, better coordination is going to happen. We're probably not likely going to have an authority that does it all at once. But every month, the RTP gets together and discusses these. And we know that there are, and some early successes are better sharing of data, discussions of best practices, and most importantly, an agreement that gives Albemarle a lot more clarity about how the money they contribute to CAT is spent. But I know that you guys are also having transit questions too. And at the July 23rd work session you had on the Fontaine Avenue Streetscape, one of the things that came up was transit, and how is transit going to be served on that corridor? Well, as you may or may not know at this point, CAT doesn't travel on Fontaine. It turns right onto Maury Avenue with a trolley there. There's no regular UTS service that I'm aware of, but there are extensive shuttles, which of course are not necessarily open to the public. As the Fontaine research park grows, there's going to be need to kind of coordinate that and make it work a little bit better. And now, there's so much I can talk to you about transit, and gosh, I'd love to. Instead, I do have a long article that I've written from the last meeting, which I'd love to send to you guys, like you two did with that album. You're going to see it in your box. But I just wanted to say that my quality of life has improved through transit, getting out of my car, seeing people on the buses every time I get on there, realizing I'm part of a community. I want that to happen in Albemarle, in Jaunt, in the other areas we're coming. This Regional Transit Partnership is a place where we can, where we already are talking about those things and discussing. And I just hope that you guys will pay attention, maybe one of you will join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to Matters to be Presented by the Public not on the formal agenda? If not, we'll close Matters by the Public, and we'll move to the Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda?
For motion? And a second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. Okay, next on our agenda is our joint meeting, Commission and Council. We do have three Council members, so do y'all... Good evening, would you like to call in to... Thank you so much. Okay, so first on our agenda is SP 19-0003. Landowner heirloom West Main Street Second Phase LLC by its agent Milestone Partners is requesting a special use permit pursuant to City Code Section 34-641 to allow additional residential density for a mixed-use building at its property having an address of 602 through 616 West Main Street, having approximately 163 feet of frontage on West Main Street. The applicant is proposing a mixed-use building with ground floor commercial space and up to 55 residential units above the ground floor. The property is further identified on City Real Property Tax Map 29 as parcel 3, from here out, known as the subject property. The subject property is zoned West Main East Corridor, or WME, subject to the West Main Street Architectural Design Control Overlay District and the Parking Modified Zone Overlay District. In the West Main East Corridor, residential units are allowed by right, including multifamily dwellings at a density of up to 87 dwelling units per acre, and additional density up to 120 dwelling units per acre is allowed pursuant to a special use permit. Buildings within the proposed development are to have a minimum height of 35 feet and a maximum height of 52 feet, subject to a bulk plane... feet and a maximum height of fifty-two feet, subject to a bulk plane restriction. The architectural, the ADC architectural guidelines state that the height should be within a hundred and thirty percent of the prevailing average of both sides of the block and should relate to an adjacent contributing building. The comprehensive land use map for this area calls for mixed use, but no density range is specified by the comprehensive plan. Mr. Holuska.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I should have thought of this earlier. Seeing the audience, I'm reminded that I, in the interest of full disclosure, provide architectural preservation consulting to the First Baptist Church, which owns the adjacent building and has concerns about this project. And I in no way receive any payment for my consultation to them and do not believe that I have a conflict of interest for which I would look to council to verify. Lisa?
I do not believe you have a conflict, so that is a legal issue. So if you believe you can participate and be objective, then under your own rules, procedural guidelines, you can continue.
Thank you.
Thank you for your disclosure. Anyone else? Mr. Leandro, you also serve on the BAR. Has this been?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And I made disclosure there, too.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holuska.
Thank you. So as the, as Madam Chair stated, this is a special use permit request for a property located between six oh two and six sixteen West Main Street, which is currently the location of the University Tire and Auto Center. The proposal in front of you is in conjunction with a plan to demolish the existing structure on the property and build a new mixed-use building on the property that is, would be mixed-use between a ground floor commercial and, but the potential for residential on the upper floors. Currently, one of the issues we had with the agenda item is it said the by right density is eighty-seven dwelling units per acre. It's actually by right density in the zone is forty-three. That was our mistake, backwards. The, so under a by right scheme, the building would be limited to twenty residential units. The proposed special use permit in front of you would increase the density on the property to a maximum of a hundred and twenty dwelling units per acre, which is the maximum allowed in the zone, which would permit the applicant to build up to fifty-five residential units on the property. The size of the building is not impacted by the SUP request, so we're really talking about, like I say, where the walls are inside the building. Staff has reviewed this against the standards in Section thirty-four dash one fifty-seven of the City Code. That analysis is included in your staff report. One item I will call out is the, the school population issue, partly because this has come up in a few times and in a conversation with the school board, and it kind of flies in the face of sort of conventional wisdom about multifamily structures of this kind, that they don't impact school population because there are no, typically this type of unit does not appeal to families with school-aged children. But what we found in, when other units along, or other developments on West Main Street have opened, is that, that there's a reshuffling of residential units, and it's not necessarily that school, school-aged children are living in those large apartment buildings, but that the residents that move in there move out of housing that is attractive to families with young children and those children that are going to the school. So the schools have reported, school superintendent has reported that they did see spikes in enrollment when large multifamily structures were opened on West Main Street. We might be talking about a different scale here. The unit count is much lower. This is a different end of West Main Street, probably appealing to a different population. In most of those cases, we may have been talking about students at the university that were living off grounds and, because they couldn't find an apartment, and once those apartments opened, they moved into them. But nonetheless, we wanted to highlight that because that is something that kind of you don't normally think of as an impact of these types of developments. I'll also touch briefly on the staff's recommended conditions. On page twelve of your staff report, you have the recommendation from the Board of Architectural Review. They found no issues with the request, but they did add some conditions that they suggested that do relate to the design of the building. So those conditions have been carried forward. I didn't mention, I didn't make one edit to clarify which building they were talking about in the conditions. Condition one is different in your staff report. That is a new condition that staff has added. And as we talked about in the pre-meeting, that is a condition that we like to use to sort of memorialize the materials that are in front of you so that there aren't a whole lot of changes from what you've received in your packet. You don't see something dramatically different get built or get submitted at the final site plan. I do know, in a discussion with the applicant prior to the meeting, I do know that two of these items, I think they would like to have further discussion on. One is item one B, that the building height shall not, shall not exceed a height of four stories, and item E regarding kind of the prescriptive condition on how the parking is arranged. They may very well want to discuss that, possibly a little more leniency in those two conditions. Based on the materials that we have in front of you and staff's analysis, staff does recommend that the application be approved. We found no applicant, no issues with the impacts of this, and we feel the conditions do serve to mitigate. Our main concern when this project is coming forward is the design review, which would be handled at the BAR, but there's definitely a, an opportunity here for what we would call kind of a stretch of the, of the street that is not, has a building that's set back, parking in the front. There's an opportunity to really create something that contributes to the overall nature of the West Main East Corridor that we felt so strongly that we rezoned this several years ago to get development that was more conducive with the existing character of that street. So that's our main concern, and I think it's reflected in the staff report. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have, and I know the applicant has a presentation as well.
I have quite a lot on this. First up, setback from street. I'm seeing a ten-foot setback. Is that zoning or is that design review?
I have to pull up the, the regulations on that, but I don't believe the, yeah, I don't have it on, on me in terms of what it is, but I'll look it up. Let me, let me find it.
Thank you. My concern is that it looks like it's being pushed back further than the rest of the street wall, which just looks strange to me.
Yeah, and one of the issues with West Main Street and any kind of any of these streets with the mixed-use code is, is the, the amenities in front of the building and being able to accommodate that in terms of the amount of space that we have. So we've had issues in, as Mr. Leandro mentioned, on downtown extended, ten feet minimum. So there you go. Ten feet minimum. But that is the minimum, there's a maximum of twenty feet. But one of the reasons for that setback is to open up the space for street trees, give buildings a little more room to accommodate utilities that there are in front of there without eliminating the ability to do trees, and also the potential for street furniture, other amenities out there, even cafes potentially. If you have a zero setback, it's all in the right of way.
The affordable housing was called out as just a question mark. What are the possibilities here?
This application does require, by virtue of going through the special use permit process, does require adherence to Section thirty-four twelve of our zoning ordinance, which is our affordable housing code section. The applicant has not indicated how they would meet that section, but they do acknowledge that they will have to meet it. Thirty-four twelve, as you well know, gives you a number of options, onsite units, off-site units, or payment into an affordable housing fund.
Finally, this is something I'm struggling with. We're finding no impact visually, and then we have a bunch of requirements recommended to offset the non-impactive. How does that work?
I would couch it in terms of, you know, I haven't heard anything from the applicant that says that they have an issue with this. It does, they're going to have to go through the BAR review process. Yeah, I would, I would concede that, you know, when we're talking about the actual increase in residential density, the visual is, that's, that's another element that would get dealt with at another time. So that's certainly, I think that's true. I think the, the idea behind putting this into conditions is partly that it's not forgotten, that it's, you know, should it be months down the road, that this item is still brought up, these, the elements of the BAR discussion are not lost at any point. So I guess that's probably the best I can do on that. Obviously, condition one, we're looking at the materials that we were presented, and there's always been a big concern about getting materials on a special use permit prior to site plan review, prior to BAR review, and seeing a certain type of material and having council vote on it, and then, once it goes through the site plan process at the, at the commission, the BAR process, that what is actually constructed was not what council remembers voting on. So condition one is very much about that, of kind of saying, this box that you see on these drawings is generally what you can expect, and if it's not specifically called out in here, there's leeway for the applicant to respond to BAR comments or whatever.
Prevention?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Somewhat related to that, one of the staff's recommendations is that the mass of the building shall be broken down to reflect the multi-parcel massing historically on the site. So that, and it goes on, that particular recommendation, are we tonight, how important is our review of that, of whether or not the drawings comply with that recommendation, or is that more of a BAR issue to discuss in that forum?
I believe that that ultimately is a, is, you know, having it as a condition of the SUP just highlights that as the intent, you know, that's a BAR, the BAR recommended that. That was a note from their discussion, as you well know. So it's making sure that that continues to go through the process, that it's not forgotten or anything like that. But I don't think the drawings tonight need to reflect that. I think it's just a reminder to the applicant and staff that this is important, and as this goes to the BAR, we want to see this reflected in the designs that go to the BAR.
So if this was approved, the drawings as they exist now were not approved in the drawing, the details of those drawings?
Correct.
Thank you.
And so how do we reconcile that condition to the building shall be broken down to look like the multi-parcel massing with one A that says only one building? Why, why do we have a problem with them having, I don't know, two side-by-side buildings so it actually would be multiple parcels? Or they just need to pretend it is visually, I guess?
I don't think the applicant's intention, and they can certainly speak to their intention as regarding building this, I don't think their intention is to build two buildings. That would certainly achieve the intent of what the BAR is looking for, but I think in the absence of an intent to build multiple buildings on the site, what we're really saying is, okay, they are going to build one building, and that built, but that building and particularly that facade and that front needs to reflect kind of the pattern of West Main East, which is not the entire width of this lot, that there needs to be some modulation or some attempt to kind of break up the massing of that. You don't want a wall along the front. Certainly, if that's something that the commission feels strongly, that you don't want to close the door to two buildings, if should the opportunity arise, you could suggest an edit to that condition.
Before we move on, I need to make a disclosure as well. I am a member of First Baptist, and I make regular offerings and tithes. So I do have a financial interest in that I give the money. Unfortunately, my mother's not very happy with me because I don't go as much as she'd like. But I do contribute regularly, and I was not aware that they, they had an interest in this for or against. I think I can be objective, but I'll leave it up to you to decide if I should, should be recused.
I do not believe that your contributions give you a legal conflict. You're a member of a congregation that includes three or more people, and the decision in this particular case is not going to change your financial position positively or negatively. So I don't believe you have a conflict. And again, under your own commission regulations, the, your guidelines simply require you to say whether or not you believe you can participate objectively.
Thank you. Can I ask you a quick, a quick question about the affordable housing? Since we don't have anything, like, we just have a range, we don't know how many dwelling units are actually going to be in this development, is that why we don't have a number of what's required under the affordability?
Based on typically the way this would work, obviously thirty-four twelve is a zoning requirement.
Right.
So there's no way around it. There's no way that someone can just not, decide not to do it. What we typically do with this is we, based on the, the site plan that comes in, the actual engineered site plan, particularly probably the final site plan, where we have square footages, we have hard numbers, we would then plug that into our, our spreadsheet and generate the amount of number of units that if they were doing onsite or offsite, or the amount of the cash contribution should they choose to forego units. That would typically come in final site plan. They usually have to state on the plan, well, they have to stay on the plan, exactly what they're trying to, what they're going to do, how they're going to comply with that. And then they need to comply with it prior to, you know, certificate of occupancy, should they do a cash contribution, or they're working with our housing program. Beyond the point of occupying the building to make sure they're continually in compliance.
So we won't know that information?
You may very well know it at the point when the site plan comes to you, because as a special use permit, it's got to come back to you. So that staff report may indicate that the applicant is looking to go this direction.
Okay, thank you. Any further question?
But, sorry, on that point, we do have the gross floor area now, right? Like, it's listed by floor over on?
It's, it's general, it's rough, and part of the calculation takes out, like, certain areas don't count, certain areas do, so part of, like, the core part of the building, the stairs, the elevators. So our spreadsheet kind of lists that out, and you really have to have, you know, a pretty detailed building plan to be able to say, this is in, this is out, this is in, and here's how we calculate it.
So I, forgive me for kind of doing the spreadsheet, but just see, see if I'm in the ballpark. I took out the parking and then just did the square footage of all the rest of the ones, and I ended up with about forty-eight thousand square feet over that one point O ratio. So that's, it's five percent of the number of square feet above one point O floor area. So that would be about twenty-four hundred square feet, or, or it's two dollars per square feet above one point O, right? So that would be like ninety-six thousand dollars or so. Maybe a little less because you take upstairs.
Yeah, it would probably be a little lower than that, but that's, we're talking ballpark. I don't think it's going to be dramatically off. You're not, that's several standard deviations off either way.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I'm looking at the recommended conditions again. I'm not seeing the materials section you're referring to. Can you point it out to me?
Which? The materials section?
On page twelve.
Page twelve.
Condition one, A through E.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, you were talking about that entire section?
The staff recommendations.
Yeah, so conditions, the, under the recommendation, conditions two, three, and four were ones directly carried over from the, they were ones that we, we brought forward from the BAR's recommendation. Item one is one that was kind of cobbled together. There's a few things in there that are from the BAR, but there are also stuff that just kind of is based on the drawing that you have in front of you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or we can move to the applicant's presentation? I'm sure we're going to have more questions, but yes, if the applicant would like to come up and you have a presentation, and I'd like to just remind you of the ten-minute presentation?
Sure.
Thank you.
Actually, I don't have a full presentation, just have a couple of comments. And I, I'm Jeff Levine with the, I'm the developer, obviously, with the developer, with Heirloom Development. The first thing I feel like I have to, like, admittedly apologize for the box that we just showed you on the site. It is, it's unattractive and our textual has no integrity, and we and we know that, um, because we're here today to just discuss what, um, can go in that box, and so as we've worked with Commissioner LaHendro, we went to the BAR early on, got their feedback, and that's why you see some of those conditions in there. We know, um, that we have to have some articulation along the road, we know that we have to break it up, and we know that this thing has to be a beautiful thing on West Main Street, similar to what we've done in the past in Char- in Charlottesville, so, um, I do get that, and I understand that. Um, I, I wanted to talk about the conditions that, um, Mr. Hleska brought up, uh, 'cause they are a little restrictive, and, uh, the four stories, we fully intend to comply with the ordinance, which is a fifty-two-foot maximum height ordinance. Uh, the stories to us, um, it's really irrelevant, you'll, you'll get a certain amount of stories within that fifty-two feet, probably max five feet, but it'll depend probably on, again, we haven't looked at the detail of the grading and of the site and to see if you could get five stories, but again, it won't impact the amount of units, um, or everything else in the staff report as to, um, adverse impact in our mind, it's just a matter of how many stories you can fit, when you really break down the site and look at it all, all the grading and all of the, um, height differentials from floor to floor, so we're not that far along, but we would like the flexibility to not have restriction to four stories. Uh, similarly, with respect to parking, we just laid out a general tray of parking, and it came out to about fifty-three spots. It's by no means a, a very well-articulated, uh, with full circulation and trash and below, and that we're definitely gonna get fifty spots, that was more, um, actually to provide comfort, because the last time, when I was before, um, a few of you, a few years ago, we were talking about parking relief on the six-hundred West Main site, and I was just really making the point here that we shouldn't need any parking relief here, that there's ample space to park, um, according to the zoning ordinance, um, the amount of spaces that are required by, by the ordinance, so I would like to eliminate any particular count of parking spaces that we need to, um, and just make it clear that we'll comply with the ordinance, um, including taking into consideration the credits that you get and, and what kinda units we build, 'cause that's, um, still up, uh, still up in the air. Um, I, other than, other than that, I'm here to answer, uh, questions, I really appreciate your time on this. Um, I will speak to, uh, some of the things just about the, the neighboring, the First Baptist Church, for example, uh, just ask the commission to, to recognize that, um, we're here to talk about this particular SUP and the amount of units that can go within this box, but if we, we're not gonna go for an SUP for residential density, and we were just doing office, or we were doing hospitality, uh, you could have, for example, sixty hotel keys built here as of right, um, so, uh, there's nothing particular, this development, that's, that's actually adversely impacting, um, the, uh, any of the neighboring landowners, um, with respect to just building these additional residential units. Um, so that'll yield my time, and, uh, LJ, did you wanna add anything? Thanks.
Do commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I do.
Great, would, could?
We should stay up there, right?
Yes, please, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Levine, um, in April of last year, uh, you spoke to Sean Tubbs, who was here a few minutes ago, from Charlottesville Tomorrow, um, and you said you didn't have any prices available for your phase one of this project at the time, uh, but they would, they would be priced higher than the general market, but wouldn't be the most expensive units in town. Um, now, I'm looking at the, uh, rental rates for the project that's almost complete, um, and I, and I think I'm your target market for this, um, and it's looking like a studio is somewhere between fourteen ninety-nine and seventeen fifty a month, uh, going up to two bedrooms, between twenty-six eighty and thirty-eight sixty, and then a three-bedroom for four thousand ninety dollars per month. Um, now, do you think that those are not the most expensive in town?
I, I know they're not, I know there are units that rent for forty-one, forty-two hundred dollars, and there are other units that rent up and down that board.
So, do you think that the units in this new phase are going to be comparably priced?
I, I mean, these won't come to market till three years from now, probably, so it's hard to say how they'll be priced, it depends what the market is, but they will be mar- they'll be market rate, whatever market rate, uh, units are at the time.
Okay, thanks.
Um, good evening, how are you?
Hi.
So I had a question on, um, I know you have three options available for the Affordable Housing Fund, I was just curious as to what option you guys are leaning towards.
Um, I don't know until I see the whole formula and what it comes out to, I mean, what I can say, and I'm actually proud to say this on the record, uh, in my last in six-hundred West Main, I had an agreement, uh, on the site plan to pay into the fund and voluntarily sat down with, uh, Stacy Pethie at the time, who was working on the affordable housing, and voluntarily built them onsite, um, and I think I probably, I, I shouldn't say this definitively, but maybe one of the only developers to do that. It's too hard to tell now without laying out the entire building and seeing what the yield is and how it works, um, but I've worked very closely with the city on, on complying with that, and I certainly will.
Any more questions?
Yeah, um, so, at four stories as proposed?
Are you gonna rent the unit? Are you, are you gonna rent the unit? Are you, you're my target.
Uh, I thought we were, I thought we were here. You just said, you just. I guess we'll see how it pans out in a few years.
Compared to your mortgage, though, it's not.
I don't have a mortgage, I am a renter, um, and, you know.
No, I'm sorry, I was.
I think I get, uh, more than four hundred ninety-five square feet for my sixteen hundred bucks, but, um, so, at, at four stories, um, this is, I know it's the limit of the zoning, or fifty-two feet is.
Yes.
Uh, but it, it's actually gonna be one of the shorter buildings, um, on West Main East, uh, shorter than, I think, the, uh, CenturyLink Building just across, or a little bit down, and then the Old Almarl Hotel right across the street is also four stories, um, and I think the steeple of First Baptist is a little bit taller as well. Um, would you build more if it were permitted?
Higher? Would I go higher if I could get, yeah, I mean, it, well, now you're getting into a larger urban planning discussion, I, I, and I think I mentioned at the time, I mean, the fact that we're gonna have a six-story, my, my building that I'm completing now is gonna be to a certain height, and then next to it's gonna be a shorter building, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna get too deep into it, but I do think they're better urban planning things, I don't think height is the only definitive measure of, of, uh, context along a street, I think going along setbacks and, and wedding cake as you come up is also indicative of contextual, it's not just about fifty-two feet versus seventy feet versus a hundred and one feet, so, um, and I will quote someone from the BAR who said to me once, "I'd rather have tall and thin," um, "But with restrictions on height, there's only so tall and thin you can do," but, uh, yes, I probably would build higher if I could, I mean.
And, uh, are you planning that this project will be steel and/or concrete, or a stick construction?
It'll be, at, at even five stories, it'll be stick construction.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, with a concrete podium underneath for five?
Maybe not, I think these, you could do five-story stick.
Okay.
Pretty well, fire-rated these days, um, so I don't think we would do that, but.
Uh, and would you say that, uh, you know, if you weren't unrestricted and you would go higher, and you, you would provide more units presumably, rather than just making them bigger to fill the space, would those units potentially, uh, have to be lower-priced in order for you to sell them all, rent them out? Um, are you, are you forced to have high prices, or, or encouraged, or able to, because of the limited supply you're offering here?
That's a, it's a very hypothetical question, I, I don't know, 'cause I mean, you're, you're asking me like deeper development questions, I'd have to sit down with the site, 'cause you might not even need to do more units, you had more height and you had more views, it might make sense, maybe because the setbacks, I mean, you're talking about things, I'd love to sit down with the city and talk about just general urban planning concepts of why height isn't the only definitive measure, and that there's a lot of things to do in the city, and that, you're, you're talking about a, a lot of different things that factor into the equation in my pro forma, but you're, um, it's, it's very hard to answer that.
Okay.
I mean, if you, if you should specifically tell me your concern, maybe I can address it, but I, I don't know what I would do if I had more height, I'd say.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, I think my last question is related to the side setback you have, uh, next to, uh, one of the historic houses that you're preserving, uh, in your designs, you show a mural that you're, you have that side setback in order to preserve the view of, uh, or I guess, or does that mural, that mural doesn't exist, right?
That mural, I mean, we're very fortunate, actually, we're having an internationally renowned muralist, Faith Forty-seven, uh, actually BAR-approved, uh, her work, and she's coming in, uh, mid to late September to do that mural, and so, me being the adjacent landowner, rather than, than cover it up with a building that I, that if I, if someone else was doing university tire, might just do it as of right, I have the opportunity to, and it also works with the BAR's, um, recommendations, and what I think is good development is to have kinda courtyard and leave that available and visible, that mural, and also have some open space, so, again, things I'll work through with the BAR as far as setback, and again, to your point, which was a good point, that we, again, show the box as zoning allows with the ten-foot setback, it doesn't mean that there won't be ten, fifteen foot, that it won't be jogged to have better architectural design, which is what we pride ourselves on, but, um, we do have the opportunity then to preserve that mural, which we're really excited about.
Great, I'm actually, sorry, I got one more question that you just sparked in me. Um, you mentioned the courtyard, uh, that I think was one of the conditions last time, your meditative courtyard.
Yeah.
Uh, are the amenities of your, uh, phase one going to be available for the phase two residents?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I, they, I, that's, again, a much larger conversation about combining them or not combining them, but I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Could I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
If we allowed you to build twelve stories, how much affordable housing would you put in this thing? Real affordable, not eighty percent AMI, not twen- but, but about thirty or four, thirty, twenty or thirty percent AMI?
Again, you're talking about...
Or would you go all market rate, 'cause you could?
Well, first of all, if, if you're telling me free, if free market, would I build, would I, would I build all market rate? Probably build all market rate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Would you say if the choice was between the status quo and twelve stories if you put in affordable housing, uh, like the height bonuses we're talking about on Thursday in the Form-based Code, uh, you don't have to know that part, um, that you could be induced?
Yes. Do you wanna have a real conversation? The real conversation is that the private and the public sector should work together to build true affordable housing in the way that they do it, it's, 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 we build every day as developers, I've said this to Ms. Pethie as well a while ago, that there should be some collaboration in how we build housing for, quote, affordable housing, whatever level it is, twenty percent to eighty percent, um, there should be real estate tax incentives, there should be all these things to try to build this housing that Charlottesville desperately needs. Um, I operate under the current rules today and the ordinance today, I'd love to have a conversation about different inducement, and, and, I mean, I've seen another, I've worked in New York, Boston, so I've seen different, different municipalities work together to achieve what I think Charlottesville's looking to achieve from the public and private sector, um, but, uh, but a lot of time without that inducement, I mean, they call it inclusionary housing and some other things, with, without that inducement, it's just the economics sometimes don't work, and that's, that's just the reality of it.
But randomly adding height just anywhere and everywhere doesn't give us affordable housing, but in your professional opinion, as you've gone around to the it's a little cautious?
Gosh, now I'm testifying like in front of, um...
Ma- Madam Chairman, may I suggest?
This is gone.
That it's important to focus on the specifics of this application that's in front of you, and perhaps you might invite Mr. Levine to a workshop, um, in the future?
Absolutely, sounds fantastic.
I'd love to, and I, and I...
And I'd like to remind us that, at this current zoning ordinance, what is going before us now, we have a certain height restriction in.
That's another thing, as long as we're on that topic, I'd like to just make sure everybody understands, in our zoning ordinance, there is a generally applicable provision that says if you reference four stories, that refers to fifty feet of height.
Okay.
In the West Main Street, each zoning district, you're allowed to have fifty-two feet of height maximum, so, if, um, if what the applicant's asking for is to be able to go to whatever the maximum height in the zoning ordinance allows, you don't need a condition at all that describes height, you can just eliminate that, and then the, the provisions of the, um, zoning district will control.
Which is fifty-two feet.
Fifty-two feet.
Thank you.
Right.
Any other questions before we have public hearing?
Um, and I noticed you bought this property a few months ago, uh, for twice market, for two-point-nine million dollars, were you in a hurry for some reason? Uh, or is there something you're, uh, working?
Where's my lawyer? Objection for relevance. I mean, your, your questions are, are very good, but they're not, I don't know if they're relevant to this application at all, are they? I don't, tell me.
No, they're, they're, I don't believe so, are they relevant?
Would I pay for this?
I, again, um, it's very important to focus on the details that are presented in the application materials, and then to ask questions to clarify how your ordinances and your, um, you know, the general land use issues to be addressed in those ordinances are to be tailored through your conditions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I have a quick question before we go on.
Yes.
Um, so, staff recommends that the building height shouldn't, shall not exceed four stories, can you, um, justify why you need five?
It's not five stories, uh, uh, the attorney, um, Robertson was very clear, it, it, the zoning speaks for itself as to fifty-two feet in height, I don't, I mean, I would respectfully say, I don't know why we would rewrite the rezoning with a condition, I have to comply with the fifty-two feet height, um, standard architectural practices will tell you I'm only gonna get probably five feet in there, but to just say four stories, and I, and I understand why, it's because my indicative plans happen to have four stories, but that was just indicative, and I learned my lesson, the next one I submit will just have a box with it, but I, so it's just, I, I just wanna stick to the zoning ordinance.
I have one, Mr. Levine?
Sure.
Um, the staff recommendation that, uh, for the underground parking, no direct access shall be provided into the underground parking from the building's street wall along West Main Street, so, how will the parking, underground parking be accessed?
It'll, it's funny, I was listening to, during the BAR, that they'll have, it'll have to be set back along West Main, it'll have to be set back a little, so it's not, quote, in the building wall, and I, I recall, maybe it was, uh, um, Tim Moore, so it was talking about, maybe there's a little drive aisle back a little further and, and, and going, and, I mean, obviously, it has to come off of West Main Street, but I, I interpret that BAR in this condition, which I'm okay with, is, it can't be right in the, in the street wall, and actually, six-hundred West Main isn't in that building wall, it is set back, as I would imagine the BAR would like it, because it's set back behind the Blue Moon Diner and, and the future retail, so, that's kinda the concept I see.
From the street wall?
Yeah, I, I interpret it as...
That's what I was wondering, where's that parking coming from?
It's, it's worded a little awkwardly, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions related to this application? Then I will, thank you so much. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. I'd remind you, you have three minutes for your public comment, please stick to this time, the light will come on and give you that information, and if you have signed up for this, at this time, we have no one signed up for this application, so if there's anyone that would like to speak to this application, please come forward, please state your name, and, um, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Pat Edwards, I'm a member of First Baptist Church, and my mother would be proud of my attendance. And I'm a Star Hill resident, and before I don't go, I wanna thank all of you for what you do, thank you, because I wouldn't wanna do it, and I thank you for it, all right. I come tonight to talk about the building, we call the Annex, and it is the old wholesinger building, it is a delicate building, and thankfully, one of the conditions is that it should be seismically monitored, I would love you all to flesh that out and say how that goes on, and who would be responsible for reading it and taking, uh, communicating to the church what is discovered as a result of it. Um, I also say there's a mural on the wall of our building, and I'm sure it was not done by, um, some famous person, but it is there, and it may well be covered up. I also want to say that that alley that runs between those buildings, the retaining wall belongs to Mr. Levine, we had a nice conversation out there in the hall, we even hugged, but, the retaining wall belongs to them, but we use that alley, it is an active alley, and we cannot have it blocked or otherwise made, so we can't use it, okay? Uh, and then, the last thing I would like to comment on is the fact that the Star Hill neighborhood... that the Star Hill neighborhood right now is being parked in by everybody and its brother, okay? UVA, construction workers, people getting on the Amtrak train, and, you know, you see them taking their luggage, heading up Brown Street, okay? Parking is a serious issue for the neighborhoods. And you say, oh, well, just get neighborhood parking. No, it's not that simple, and it's, and it's not particularly convenient. So I'd appreciate very much, I said, "Look at the green light, good." I would appreciate very much if you would be mindful of the fact that surrounding neighborhoods are being impacted by all the construction, and the fact that there'll be people, yes, they'll ride their bicycles, but guess what they'll also have? Cars. And you probably are not going to have enough parking for them. So they're going to, long-term, park them in our neighborhoods, okay? And that is a problem. The trash men can't back down the hill anymore because their cars on either side. And so those poor guys have to walk down the hill to get the trash and bring it back up. I gotta go, bye.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak regarding this application?
Good. Amy Markham. Earlier this...
Sorry, Mark, that was not intentional.
Earlier this year or last year, I don't really remember which, one of you board members made a comment that when some of these developers come before the group here with requests for SUPs, they need to get back to the community. And I think this is a good case of where that could be done, and should be done. It would be really nice if the developer was to do some efficiency-type units, smaller units, which could be possibly done at a lower course. There's definitely people that live in, well, should say, work in the downtown area, who would like to not have to be taking cars into town and trying to find affordable housing. And this could be a good location for something like that. So I do feel that there should be some affordable housing on site. And so I hope the developer will, you know, look at that. I had the option to be able to be very blunt in some of my comments and what I like to say, which sometimes you all can't do. But I think we have a developer here that basically is looking at it from the standpoint of how much can he possibly get out of the units and maximize his, you know, return on investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward and state your name.
Thank you. My name's Paul Reader. I live the other side of the tracks in the Five Phil neighborhood. So I would firstly like to just echo the comment that was made about parking in the neighborhoods. We have yet to see the impact of the allowance for a lower parking provision from 600 West Main Street. I believe that it's going to impact parking in the Five Phil, as well as the Star Hill neighborhood, since we have the convenience of having the same developer here. Perhaps we ought to be looking to make up a little bit on what we haven't got, because my recollection, a long time ago, was that you agreed to make provision for parking for, for people who couldn't park within 600 West Main Street. And I was wondering where that had, where that had got to, because I haven't seen any of it yet. And the, I just think it's a little bit naive to expect that we're going to put up these very expensive apartments and expect that people won't have cars, and they're just simply going to ride their bikes or crash their scooters. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this project? Then I will close the public hearing and open this up for discussion. Or a motion.
Actually, I have a question for staff, following up on public comment, if I may. May I?
Sure.
Had a question about seismic monitoring procedure, which is something I don't know much about. Can you, how detailed can we get? What are the options here?
I don't know much about it either. So I'm not entirely sure how much we would, at what point in the condition you'd want to spell things out versus what could be left to the applicant to kind of demonstrate that they've complied with that. The only, I think the guidance we may have is City Council's blasting ordinance did kind of delve into that a little bit. So we do have some people within the city who have gone into some of that in terms of how they've done it. I know the applicant mentioned, you know, they were working very close to the, what we would consider the ABC building, the adjacent building on the other side of 600 West Main and the diner. So they were working extremely close to that building when they were building their current project, and they had to go through precautions there. Typically, you know, there is seismic monitoring that can be done in conjunction with blasting. There's a whole process by that. Obviously, we're not talking about that here. I really shouldn't be using the B-word at all. But there are methods in terms of, that are similar in terms of doing a survey of the property prior to any construction activity, documenting it, and being, you know, kind of periodically checking on it to see if there's any, any kind of signs of damage or signs of disruption, and, you know, mitigating those as soon as you can. Obviously, letting, letting a problem continue makes things worse. Sort of looking at Mr. Lohandra a little bit, because I know he's familiar with the building there, and...
What is the age difference in, say, the Blue Moon Diner and the Wholesinger Building? What's that, I mean, because the Wholesinger Building is much older, right?
About 19, I mean, not, yeah, 1912, something like that?
Yeah. And they did, I mean, they've worked around, on the current building, they've worked around three buildings, two that they own. I'm talking about, you know, they worked, the ABC building was where the ABC store is. That was the building they didn't own, but they do have.
So here's a picture of it when it was the Standard Produce Company with the horse wagons pulled into the first floor, and Wholesinger's studio was upstairs. And there is still in the basement, the freight elevator from this operation, and the 1920s cooling system that cooled the Produce Company, the operation. So it does go back. It has some wonderful history. And in terms of the monitoring, you know, I'm a little familiar with it because of my work in, at the Rotunda, but that was a very, a system. So I was going to suggest that the details of this, of course, have to be worked out, but at least to modify the recommendation to say that real-time notification to building occupants of significant movement would be required. And that way, we have, it's being monitored as the work is going on, and then there are set limits, certain movement amounts. At the Rotunda, when it moved a twentieth of an inch, we received a notice. At a, at a sixth, at an eighth of an inch, we received an alarm, and at a quarter of an inch, we shut the project down. So something similar to that can be worked out, so that the, we have the, and I think the main concern is the, first off, the safety of the occupants of the building as this project is going up. And then, of course, we do want to know if there's been any damage to the building as a result of these construction activities.
Can I ask you a question based off of your knowledge with that? Does it make sense, and I don't know if this is, since this is special use permit, we can have conditions on this, does it make sense to pull that further back on that side from the...
By what do you...
Because right now, the only thing is, the only thing that's, is it the alley. It's right up, the building is shown right on the alley.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So what do you mean by pulling it back?
Having a setback on that side to the alley, as opposed to just the building.
Now, that gets into engineering and geology, and what's the, what's the ground like there? And is there rock formations? I can't answer that.
But I'm saying from a, I'm not asking you for engineering, but I'm just saying from a, from a, from a standpoint of having just that whole structure moved a little bit further from the Wholesinger Building, requiring a set, what, requiring a setback at that alley instead of right on the alley?
Um...
To give more room to work?
Shockingly, I probably would be, I am fine with the, just the alley being there, because that is the historic development of projects and buildings on this street. They had alleys between them, and they put them as close as they could, and that's the historic development. I'll catch all kinds of hell from my, my good friends, but, no, as, as an architectural historian, I would say that the alley is fine. And, and they've been dealing with the fact that there's a retaining wall, so they, it's not like they've had additional space to be able to pull out in the past.
So I don't know which of you two, or maybe Lisa this is for, but is there, like, existing recourse if there is seismic damage? Like, is that, like, to shut the project down, for example? So, I mean, monitoring is great. It tells you that the building's going to collapse, but did they get anything out of that?
Not unless you write something into the conditions.
So, and so let's just play devil's advocate. What happens if, so we have a condition that says monitor, you know, the seismic monitoring as this project goes. What happens if all of a sudden there is damage to a historic, obviously historic structure? I mean, I know that's a civil matter between two parties, but...
So the question in those cases is always how close a relationship there is between damage that somebody finds in their building, and, and somebody's proving that that is the result of some sort of seismic activity caused by the development on the parcel. And so that's not something the city would typically be in the middle of, but I would suggest that if you do include a condition that requires the gathering of data regarding seismic activity generated by the development activities, that perhaps the easiest thing to do is, would, would be to require that information to be shared with an adjacent property owner on request. I don't know if that's something the landowner, you know, would, would want to agree to, but I think that's about as far as you should go.
But would it at least be like a tort that they could sue over if they could prove that they...
That's generally what happens in those cases, yes.
It would count, though.
Yeah. That, the city would not typically be involved in that. That's something that two landowners would, would sue each other.
Yeah, but they do have private recourse.
That's right.
Gotcha. Thanks.
So it would be wise to, to digitally document the building before construction starts, then to have it monitored during construction, and then do the same kind of documentation at the end of the project to see if there's been any movement? Now, the details of this, I can't give you, and, and I hope that doesn't, I hope there's a way around that, that the details can be worked out as, as the project goes along, but without, but I don't, we can't do that sitting up here in this diocese.
I know the applicant is mentioning that he might have some language to suggest in this regard, so I don't know if you want to recognize him or not.
One second.
I'm sorry.
I do have a question. Why was this not something that the staff thought of, since we do have a historic building right next to it? I mean, is this something we've ever done in the past, this seismic monitoring?
We've never put a condition in terms of seismic monitoring. We've done conditions in terms of notification of businesses prior to construction, you know, maintenance of a hotline type thing, or, you know, phone number contact. But this is the first that this kind of condition has been brought forward, and it was, you know, suggested by the BAR.
And is the Annex Building an individually protected property, or just the church?
Historic district, yeah.
The Wholesinger Building is a contributing member to the historic district. So yes, it is a certified historic building. And the church itself is individually listed on the state and national registers.
Gotcha. Thanks.
So I just have a question. Why would we have monitoring in place and no enforcement behind it?
It's not, I think the rationale behind that would be that there's a condition on the SUP to generate a record that the parties that are involved here would be able to access. I don't know that, you know, the city, the recourse from the city, the city's not swooping in into a civil matter. We're not a party to that. So, you know, anytime there's a, some dispute between private property owners, the city doesn't mediate that. We don't come in and do an enforcement action. We can only enforce the rules that we have the legal authority to enforce.
So I guess my question is, is clearly there was some type of issue or that arise from the BAR if they put, if they made the condition. So let's say construction starts, we notice that there's some shift in the building, then what, we just continue to keep shifting? Like, where is the accountability or the enforcement of, okay, you're destroying the historic?
I see what you're saying. Like, all right, fine, all of a sudden, it shifted a half an inch, now what? Or does that give the city...
So not so much as in, oh, you destroyed our building, now you got to pay us. But if we're going to have this monitoring in place, what is the purpose of, purpose of it? Like, how are we enforcing it?
And it's like, I've got a 24-inch tree, but as long as I cut it down on Sunday, y'all are in the place, and all of a sudden, the tree's gone.
The, the way the condition is worded, I think they satisfy, the applicant satisfies that condition by having the monitoring in place. What's done further beyond that is a matter between the private property owners in terms of, okay, in the event of this, this happens, or, you know, the church has access to the data, and, you know, somebody can say, okay, we've got these issues that arose because of this construction activity. Let's talk about how we're going to fix that. But ultimately, I mean, we can't step in for the churches, on the church's behalf.
But the church could sue for an injunction or repair money and...
Through the judicial, yeah.
Through the courts or something.
Why did there, on this, from the BAR, why was there not a section of this about data collection? Because it just talks about demolition or seismically monitor, but there was not data collection, new seismically monitor. So...
Because, again, the details of what this would be, the kind of equipment, what kind of monitoring, how much of a difference before someone is notified, is it real time? Are the occupants notified as soon as they have? Lots of details. So it was just left as a general statement with the understanding and hopes that the details would be worked out later.
Okay. I think. The applicant has something to say about this?
Thank you. I was just going to say, I was going to try to put people's mind at ease a couple of things. So I did, in a similar agreement with adjacent landowner, I mean, the partly comforting thing is I built 600 West Main, didn't knock four buildings down, so that was a good news. And two of them were contributing structures and very old. But I did have an arrangement, and I could probably work, I could probably work with you on language that I've done with adjacent landowners that has, I know the detail you're looking for, and it is very specific as to how you monitor, and you get the reports, and OJ gets them on his phone. And I can, I can put everyone at ease, not with language, that the building's not going to come down, it's not going to move, and, and that's, I mean, the, the ultimate recourse is to get sued for taking down a building is not a good idea. So, that's good.
So one modification might be, instead of to, might be to simply require an agreement with that...
That's what I was thinking.
Adjacent property owner, under a written agreement, setting forth the terms of, you know, under which... you know, under which monitoring would occur and whatever type of agreement you're referring to. I don't know what was in the agree, what types of provisions are in the agreement you were just referring to, but...
But Alder, the, the reason I could never agree to that is that you would put the power in the adjacent landowner that I could never get an SUP until they agreed with me. And then they would just simply not agree. So what I would do is I would, I would agree to the condition that we will seismically mon, seismically monitor, provide data and not cause any structural damage to the neighboring building. And how I will do that, I will provide detailed language of how I will do that and I will put that as a condition. But I can't stand here today and have an agreement to agree. It just gives my neighboring landlord too much le, too much leverage over me to say, I'm just never gonna agree. And despite Mrs. Edwards and I hugging it out, that's, that's a tough, and I, and I think actually she and I will work through a lot of things, but...
Okay. Provide data and not cause any damage to the adjacent building?
So I, I think that where this is going, I think there has to be more words in this condition and I think that you could make a recommendation for those categories of things to be included and then the applicant can send us whatever specific language that, that he would be agreeable to including within the condition which could be incorporated as this goes forward to council. If, if you're satisfied that maybe the condition that's coming out of here is that the, the applicant will provide language along the lines that he just stated to, to be included as part of the seismic monitoring condition.
Could you say something like, the applicant agrees to provide data, monitor, seismically monitor the adjacent structure during activities involving, involving demolition, excavation, or construction of the building, and underground parking, and agree to not cause any damage to the adjacent structure? The agreement language to be worked through and agreed to by the city attorney? I've never written conditions, so I'm just kidding. I mean, would it be you all that would help define?
Is that acceptable to you?
I, I was, it's, it's...
This is...
That's still very well worded. I don't even think you need the last part because once you put in that there can't be any damage and I have to do all that, essentially, you talk about, I'll never get a certificate of appropriateness or anything else unless I've shown that I didn't do that. So I don't know then what other language, I mean, I don't have a proper, you understand what I'm saying, I don't know.
Agreement, though.
I, I think that, I think that what you just read is fine. I think that the wording of the final condition needs to be finessed. I don't, I, I don't like doing it on the fly here, that what's in there, I, I'm sorry it wasn't flushed out before it got to you, but it's, it's, it's too general. The applicant is offering a, a solution, but I, I believe that the applicant should provide the specific wording for, the, the final wording for a condition which will be consistent with the representation he just, he just made as to what the, the
I understand that.
obligation would be.
I understand that part. This is what concerns me with that, is this is not a proffer, so all this is not left up to the applicant to provide us the language he wants. This is a special use permit condition.
Well, then staff or the BAR have to help us craft the specific language because we don't have it.
How can we vote on this tonight without that language?
I, I don't know what to tell you.
Could we make a recommendation that, on the vague, like outlines of what we want that to be? And then just like BAR punted on the specifics and then we can punt the specifics to you and staff to figure out by the time council votes?
As, as long as the final wording is consistent with what's been discussed here tonight, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but, you know.
I would like to hear more about the applicant and the landowner. So First Baptist being able to have, come to an agreement, not just what the landowner, the applicant agrees to. That doesn't, it's, it's not sitting well. If you're talking about, you know, being able to settle this in court, clearly the landowner will have more funds available to do that, and so you're putting a church in a position where they may not be able to fight a legal battle, so if, whatever we can do on our end, we need to take care of.
Yes.
Could we ask the applicant to work with the church to come up with an agreement and then come back to us with a, with something, with a proposal?
Uh, Councilman Galvin.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I just sent this to, um, Ms. Robinson. If you look under the National Park Service, they have guidelines for protecting a historic structure during adjacent construction. And one statement is, when historic structures are exposed to adjacent construction or demolition, protect the plan. Including documentation, monitoring, and specific safeguards should be implemented to prevent damage or loss of historic fabric. There's a whole bowl of stuff in this document that might very well provide that language, but in, in short, there needs, it sounds like there should be a protective plan. I just, sorry to interrupt, but you didn't have time to look that up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'm interested in, under our current guidelines, if there are, since we assume an SUP, if there are potential enforcement from the city again. And if legal can look into that.
There would be, based off of what I know with the state law, this is a civil matter between two private landowners. Except for this special use permit condition, right.
I will say that the reference to a protective plan, given the, the status of that building as a historic building, is, is something that I would be more comfortable with in a condition such as this, in a special use permit condition. But again, I, it's really difficult to do this at a public meeting, but the, the notion that we would require a protective plan, I'm more comfortable with that than the language that just says monitor seismic activity. I think that's more consistent with our historic district guidelines and, you know, the requirements that, that everyone not do harm to historic buildings. But I don't, um, I, I, we don't know what that plan would look like right now. We don't have one that staff's ever used.
So this is a, a, a good opportunity for me to say, I always encourage you all to come to us at a work session. We love to work these kind of things out, especially if it's complicated, in a work session so that we can have this back and forth as opposed to up here on the dais. That's just my plug for that little thing.
Which I, which I will definitely do. I'm, I'm bringing another project before you when I request, and I, I've requested that meeting. But what I, what I would suggest is, once you put in the condition that seismically, seismically monitor, notice, notify the landowner and cannot cause structural damage to this building. Once you put that in the condition, then you've got me, you're, you're all, all the things is, is I will have to show you that or I will not get a certificate of appropriateness, building, TCO. And if you wanna hold a developer up and you talk about cost of funds or anything, I will have built an entire building, be done with a project, waiting to open it, and I will have to demonstrate that I did not structurally damage that building. That's all, I mean, in my mind, that's all you need, there's no other hammer larger than, than that. It's, it's, it's no different than the BAR gives me approval to follow out this design of this building and then I go develop this entire building and I still have to get a certificate of appropriateness that shows that I've designed this building in the context of what they've approved, so...
I don't feel comfortable with that because as we can see, these different bodies love to punt, as my fellow commissioner said, items off to other people. So if you are asking for a special use permit to feel comfortable granting you that, I would like to see the details of what this should look like. Because just saying that you're gonna monitor it is one thing. If you're monitoring and this is what happens, if XYZ happens, then those are details. So just saying, oh, I can't get a certificate of occupancy, still does not, it covers you. It, we, we're not looking at it from both sides of the agreement, or of, of the two landowners. It, we're looking at only you. And our issue here is that we're also trying to make sure that the adjacent property is covered as well.
Well, let me, let me reiterate my specificity. I'm not just saying I'll monitor it, I'm saying that I will not cause structural damage to that. So you won't just have in the condition that I'll monitor it, you'll have this ultimate thing which none of us can know till the project's over. And what everyone's looking for is that there's no structural damage to this building. So once you put that condition in, that's what's, what's larger than that. I can't, you're not punting it. You're basically, it's no different than saying, I can't build over 52 feet or, or any other, or, or I have to have my driveway off of it. I mean, what's your protection? I don't put my driveway off. I mean, you're putting a condition in this resolution that says I cannot cause structural damage to this adjacent building. In fact, the risk on me, I'm gonna have to stand before someone one day and show you that I have not caused that structural damage. So no one's punting it. You're, you're, you're laying, you're, you're burdening risk where risk should be. It's on me. You're putting the risk on me to not cause damage to this neighboring building, and I don't think I can do anything more than that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
Is it a possibility to say the wholesinger building shall be seismically monitored, what this language says? Activities involving demolition, excavation, and proof that no damage to this adjacent building must, the applicant must provide proof prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy?
So you tell me how the zoning administrator is supposed to resolve a situation in which the owner of this property says, I didn't cause any damage, and the owner of the adjacent property says, I have damage and I think it was attributable to this. And the zoning administrator is, that it's not a zoning issue. I, I, I do like Ms. Galvin's suggestion that, that we talk about a protective plan. I think that's more consistent with, with the, how we are set up in connection with looking out for historic properties under our, our zoning requirements and our BAR guidelines, but I just, I haven't, I can't read a park service regulation while I'm sitting in a public meeting.
Right.
I think that, I'm happy to review it. I'm happy to reserve, review the language of that with the applicant and discuss what, what the pros and cons of that may be and, and the comfort level. That's not to say that it's necessarily for the applicant, if, if our office is satisfied that it's a reasonable condition related to, you know, land use. It's not to say that applicant has necessarily the final say if our office can get comfortable with it. But we need to, I, I just, I can't, I can't do this on the fly.
I understand that this language should not be done on the fly.
Yeah.
I disagree that you can't tie this to the CO. I do this every day.
I didn't say that, but what I'm saying is that the, the notion that there would be a land use condition and a special use permit that requires a, a protective plan relative to an adjacent historic property is much more consistent with the, our general approach to crafting conditions for special use permits. I can't think of another situation that I've been involved in where we make somebody promise absolutely no damage to an adjacent property and that gets enforceable through by the zoning administrator.
Well, who's enforceable by that?
We, we don't, there's all sorts of ways in using your property, you can damage somebody next to you. Zoning is concerned with your use of your property. Our historic district regulations are concerned with protecting historic properties. I'm willing to consider looking at this notion of, of requirements for a plan and what, what aspects would be in there. But I just, I...
I agree with you, if it's two individual properties, right, it's a civil matter, but this is not. This is a special use permit. So this is a governmental regulation.
But our zoning administrator is not qualified to determine whether a large crack in a foundation of a building, who caused that?
I, I'm not suggesting yes, but I am suggesting that we make something in, have something in here to be able to, to at least give the church some peace of mind?
I'm agreeing with you. I'm just saying I can't do it right now.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion that may get us somewhere? That, well, it would be something to the effect that the applicant shall implement a ser, a, a monitoring service that, that protects the wholesinger building and its occupants during construction that does the following. First, digitally documents the wholesinger building prior to construction. Second, seismically monitor during the construction with real-time notification to occupants of significant movement. And third, digitally document the wholesinger building following construction.
You still feel uncomfortable with that because the language?
That would be fine with me.
And that way it's up to, I mean, it, ultimately it's gonna be the church that has to prove that something happened to their building. So they have the documentation before and after construction to show that something did happen and could then take it as a civil matter to, 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 to the applicant. I, that's, I'm no lawyer.
Right.
Could you read those one more time? Sorry.
It won't be the same. The applicant shall implement a monitoring system to, that protects the wholesinger building and its occupants that, that does the following. Digitally documents the wholesinger building prior to construction. Seismically monitors the building during construction with real-time notification to occupants of significant movement. And lastly, to digitally document the building following construction. And all that data being provided to the First Baptist Church.
Do you consider construction, demolition, and construction?
Yes.
Okay.
I do.
I, I still have the question of the cause and effect. So if for some reason, and I know their goal is not to damage the building because he doesn't wanna have to be reliable, but he's also not the one doing the construction either, physically. So my question is, is if we are putting in a mon, a monitoring system in place, and kinda like you said with the rotunda, if it moves however many centimeters of an inch or whatever, then what? Are we gonna keep building? Do we stop building? Do we fix what has, the problem it has caused? I guess I, I'm not com, I'm okay with the agreement, but I feel like if we're gonna have an agreement, we also need to have, if this happens, then this takes place. Do you see what I'm saying? Like the cause and effect. I feel like we have the cause, but then, okay, we're gonna leave it up to them to fight it and...
And it's like the mayor said, then we leave it on a church, who doesn't have the same amount of funds.
Or just in general, shouldn't we left on them, just be like, hey, well, we, we messed up your building, we gonna keep going, you figure out the rest later.
Yeah.
So maybe that gets incorporated into the plan that Kathy mentioned? So they lay out a plan with, I assume, a structural engineer that says this is the threshold, the seismic movement where it matters and something else needs to happen? Does that make sense? Is that what the, that sort of plan usually has?
So, I have a question. What's our timeframe on this? If we deferred till next month, do we have, does it, so that we can get this worked out?
Missy, do you know that one?
That sounds like a good idea.
Or is the idea that we would have like that whole if then move worked out or the condition that...
The language in this to make it, because right now we're just throwing out words and maybe forgetting something, but if our legal... But if our legal counsel has the opportunity, maybe the applicant and, and also all parties involved to take a look at it prior to us making a vote. Because once we take a vote and it goes to council, I'd rather not have it happen there. I'd rather us be clear on this, because I think it is important. I think, we all think that's important, um, that we get this right the first time. So, um-
And see, I, I mean, it, it all can't fall upon the applicant. The, the, the church has to take responsibility that if they, if they're notified that there's been movement that's occurred, then the church puts the applicant on notice that movement has occurred and you have created damage to our building. If the applicant proceeds with construction and takes a chance of the, of the building failing, um, I mean, that's, that's a huge lawsuit. Um, and, and the church would be wise not to have people go back in the building if the applicant, uh, decides to go ahead with construction, knowing that there's been damage.
Totally agree. But I think this language needs to be worked out so that it is, is comprehensive. Yes?
May I offer a potential solution that may not have been considered?
How about a deferral?
I'll offer that second.
Okay.
Um, so as part of the site plan process, we're, um, responsible for providing a traffic management plan. I wonder, and that site plan also has to return back to the planning commission? So if we condition the preservation protection plan to be worked out between now and the time of site plan to return to the planning commission for review and its approval? Is that a potential alternative to allow us the opportunity to work through the details, the specifics, the language of that preservation protection? What details, what industry standards for the seismic monitoring, the vertical and horizontal, uh, movement, um, pre and post-construction documentation and what the parameters are? And as a little side note, Mr. Leandro, what you outlined is exactly what we have done on the current six hundred West Main for the directly adjacent property line ABC store. Um, precondition photo documentation, seismic monitoring, which had real-time, uh, notifications and those limits set to industry standards per the Geotech analysis and, and their Geotech industry standards. Um, those were provided both to, uh, applicant developer, construction team, and also the adjacent owner. Uh, and then post-construction, uh, documentation, photo documentation. Um, so to the extent that that may be an acceptable alternative to include as a, in similar vein as a traffic management plan, a preservation protection plan, um, we'd submit that at the time of site plan, which would return to the planning commission. And my second-
Would that hold up legally? But I mean, this is a special use permit condition. I, I, I just don't know how that holds up at the same-
So I think, I think that's doable. Um, it would include a requirement for a preservation protection plan. Um, you should have that resolved so that an approved protection plan can, can, um, be, uh, established before final site plan approval. I, I don't know that I'd like the idea that, that it's part of the site plan. Um, but if we could agree on who's going to approve that plan, um, and the plan has to be in place before final site plan approval could be obtained, then, then I think we're there.
So if we were at a-
So we need to establish who's responsible for pronouncing the plan to be approved.
So we're writing another condition somehow?
No, it's just, it would be a simple condition. We change the condition to say that, um, a preservation protection plan shall be approved by blank, um, and prior to final site plan approval. So essentially, you couldn't get your final site plan approval till all your, any conditions that, that come from the special use permit have been satisfied. Um, and this condition would say that plan has to be approved before final site plan approval. But we need to choose who would, who at the city would be responsible for approving that plan as being adequate.
And is there a, a department in the city engineering office that would have that expertise that we have now?
We're not sure what's involved with the plan yet.
Right. So how do we know who to put, put this on?
Maybe it's the BAR?
If, if I might recommend, we have to return to the BAR for certificate of appropriateness for design regardless of its, uh, this application or a by right, you know, commercial application that still meets all of those guidelines. And that, uh, condition came out of the BAR. So I might condition that as, uh, the BAR. And we have to return to the planning commission for the final site plan review, uh, as well. So if you put both bodies in there, we can work with staff to craft the plan between now and return. We could take opportunities at a future work session to work through those details. Uh, and that allows us, uh, more time to vet that, um, and not spend that time here creating it on the fly.
Or we could do a deferral because maybe we don't like your plan. Not saying that we wouldn't, but then maybe depending on what that plan looked like, I may not wanna vote for your SUP. I'm just saying, I feel like if we're gonna vote, we should have all the information, as we've said before, in front of us, let us review it and make that decision from there. Because right now, I don't feel comfortable with this. I don't think we have enough details. That's just my personal opinion.
No, I, I appreciate that.
Does it have to be a staff, city staff person that approves it? Um, uh, it sounds like it does.
Well, no, it could be the-
So that's not the BAR?
It could be the BAR, it could be you. Um, but I think it needs to be, um, you know, your site plan approvals are, are based on requirements in your ordinance, um, and, and other zoning regulations. This isn't, this wouldn't be an ordinance requirement, but it'd be, would, it would be a zoning regulation because it would be in the SUP. But, um, um-
But if there's a civil engineer on staff, I'd be glad to cons- work with that person to, to review it.
Who do we, I mean, it's a, this, this, this is a big thing to put your name on, to go, yeah, this is gonna work.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
I think that's, um- You know, it's, it's very difficult. While I understand the issues at stake, they're important historic issues, but it's very difficult when the BAR sets this out and it's, it, it's not real clear. You know, people don't really think about what it means to establish a zoning regulation that you're gonna expect a zoning administrator to enforce.
I have a higher expectation of the zoning administrator than you do then, so, but-
But I'm just saying, it's difficult the way this is coming forward.
And I get that. But that was a question, had this not been in here, protection of these buildings is a huge topic of discussion I was gonna have tonight anyway.
Sure. Um, but-
Whether it was in there or not from the BAR.
We can, we can certainly, um, include a condition that requires an approval of a preservation protection plan. Um, but we'd need to specify who's gonna approve that. So if it's gonna be, if the planning commission needs to, um, determine that the preservation plan is adequate at the time of site plan approval, then it can be you. Um, since the, the BAR was the source of the recommendation, um, you could specify in the condition that the plan would be approved by them and it has to be approved before you can get final site plan approval. Or you can specify somebody else who will approve the adequacy of the plan. It wouldn't necessarily be guaranteeing that's what's in the plan is gonna keep damage from happening. It would just be approving the, the list of things that would, would be done-
Be necessary to be put in place.
To, to attempt to protect the adjacent property.
That makes more sense.
Um, I just had a quick question and we may have already covered this. Who is gonna be in charge of, um, monitor, monitoring on city staff this, their monitoring?
Um-
Is somebody already in place for that?
No.
Oh, okay.
Now that, and now periodic reports to someone on city staff could be part of a preservation plan. That could, that could be part of that. Um, but just the, the condition is it has come forward to you tonight wouldn't, doesn't address that.
Well, that was one of my initial questions anyway.
Look, our engineer's on his way in right now. Are you coming down to enlighten us with something?
I was coming in if you, if you may, want me to comment?
Do you have, on this?
Yes.
Come on up, please. But you're the transportation engineer.
I, I am, I am-
So how does this work?
I, I'm a, a civil engineer who happens to be the traffic engineer at the city. Um, I, if you're going to rely on the, the city staff, I would say that we make a condition more like we do for structural walls and that kind of stuff in the city, that there be a plan for the preservation that's stamped by, you know, a structural engineer who focuses on historic preservation or something like that, that then staff can review. Uh, but I don't think that putting the whole emphasis on a particular staff member, um, would, would be a good idea.
Can you explain why not? Just go down here.
Ju- just because it's a, it's a very specialized field as far as the structural engineering. Um, and I don't know that we have any of our civil engineers on staff that are that specialized to speak to seismic, uh, you know, fluctuations and stuff. I mean, we can review a plan and, and see if it, it makes sense. And again, we're, we're relying on the stamp of someone who has, you know, put their whole career into historic preservation and structural analysis and that kind of stuff.
And their license.
And their license as well. Um, so, so yeah, that's, that's really more, it's, it's not that, yeah, I mean, I studied structural engineering in, in college, but, um, you know, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable putting my stamp on a plan saying that by all means, like, you know, this is going to protect that building. Um, I just don't have that background and I don't know that anyone that is currently on our staff does.
So just to clarify, the suggestion is that, um, the requirement would, would be that the applicant would develop a plan and we would review it, the staff would review it?
Correct. Yes, it would have to be some kind of stamped plan. I mean, we can work with, you know, whether-
By structural engineer.
Right, whether it's, you know, and I would even go further than that and like someone who's had experience with structurally preserving historic buildings, because I think that's, I mean, there's a difference between a structural engineer who their whole career is, you know, building new bridges or buildings versus trying to maintain and, and preserve those, uh, you know, that are existing. Um, there is, there is a difference there.
You, we're right back to, I don't know, we should craft this or, this, this particular tonight.
It's up to you. If there's time for a deferral, um, you, you don't have to act, um, until your next meeting. Missy says there's time. So if you would like to continue this for a decision and we can work on a condition for your consideration, um, that I think would probably be the best thing for you all in your, your review of this.
Would that require a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I move to continue?
Say again?
I move to continue?
To continue what?
Am I, is, am I using the wrong term?
To continue, um, taking action on this application until your next meeting.
Then make a motion to approve or deny? That would be-
I think I'm doing the opposite.
Oh.
I think he means continue to the next meeting.
Differ. Yes.
Oh, oh, okay.
The word is defer.
Yes.
Well, for you all, it, it doesn't matter. Um, usually you use the word to defer when the applicant's requesting. You all are just sort of tabling it till your next meeting. You, you, you have to act within a hundred days of it being referred to you and you have time left. So you don't have to act tonight.
Okay.
I think the applicant is up.
Procedural-
Yeah.
She's the lawyer though.
Procedural question, when you referenced, do we have time between meetings, is, what, what would be the next council meeting that this, or agenda that this would go on? Is it a planning commission meeting in between then and the, the council meeting? Is that what was suggested?
No, it'd be September.
It would come back to the commission at its September meeting, which would mean it would not go to city council until October.
Till October. And if it were acted upon in any capacity tonight, then it would go on which council agenda?
Uh, September.
Si- first September.
The first of September.
Or it's not the first, it's the third, I think, is the, is the Tuesday because of the holiday, Labor Day holiday.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification.
And would it be the first of October, the first meeting?
If that is-
Yeah, it is also the first.
Oh, no, it's Tuesday.
Oh, sorry, yeah, we're the Tuesday people.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's the summer, okay.
So we would make a motion to move this to the, to continue this? Is that what the motion-
To your regular September meeting? And direct staff to, um, bring you a better condition?
A more comprehensive condition?
For a, a, a preservation plan. For a preservation plan.
Does that sound right?
That's exactly what I had in mind. It's amazing.
It just took a lot longer to say.
I didn't know what you meant by continue either. I was like, all right, fine, doesn't do this.
I assume we've-
Um, so the, the motion is to, uh, move this to the, uh, next commission meeting in September, which is September tw- tenth or-
I think it's, it's earlier, hold on. It's, it is the tenth, you are correct.
Tenth. Um, and direct staff to work on this condition to reflect the discussions that we're having this evening about our concerns and have a protection plan and, uh, referenced in that condition. Did I state that correctly?
Exactly.
Fantastic. That's the motion. Do I have a second? We're, uh, uh, hang on, this, we're in the middle of this motion. I have a motion. You confirm?
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that as part of that motion with the, is the, not just to say that we're having the protection plan, but the details of the-
That's right.
Okay.
Direct staff to take our comments and ca- come up with a more comprehensive condition.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we have a motion and a second from Mr. Stolzenberg. Uh, I will just say that during this time, Mr. Heaton has had an emergency of some sort and, uh, Mr. Mitchell has decided he probably can't vote on this without some, uh, being bare-minded in his own head, I guess. So he left. So that's where we are. So we're now at five. Um, I have a motion and a second. You had-
For clarity from if, if this does get deferred, the return here, are we gonna narrow this conversation to a protection plan? And not because there, I mean, I'd like to hear at least a discussion or a poll on the other things, because we discussed not having the four-story limitation, we discussed not having a parking, we've got this broader thing. And so I'd prefer not to start again. If we're gonna come in with a protection plan and discuss that, then that would kind of focus us and I could be limited to that. Um, and I also would, I didn't bring an attorney to this, so I'll ask you, but the thing that seems to jump out at me is that the discussion should be about how the incremental density has an adverse effect on the neighborhood. And I don't know how the increased density has any effect on the adjacent landowner's building. So I just put that out there so it's on the record, so maybe my counsel will call. I don't, I don't know how this kind of goes into the level of, of whether how additional density has an adverse impact on the adjacent owner. And I've proffered some, some very good compromises this evening, which I think should give you the comfort to vote. So, um, I'm disappointed we're not having a vote, but if we are not and we're gonna defer it, then I would like to limit it just to this protection plan. And I'd also like to reserve the right to have a further conversation with my counsel and understand how the limited review of increased density has an effect on, um, seismic effects of an adjacent building.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna take a vote and then we'll have some further discussion about anything else that y'all may have concerns with. I'll still go back to, we offer these at work sessions so we can have back and forths before we get up here and try to ma- before we get up here and try to make sausage in front of everyone and all the people. So, uh, I prefer to make sausage in the work sessions. So we have a motion and a second, and that is to come back to the September 10th meeting, uh, to continue this discussion and hopefully have a better condition number three that relates to a protection plan and all of our concerns related, that the, the staff will come up with that word.
Is it, okay.
Is that good? You sure?
Not really.
Okay.
I mean, just be.
Well, it's gonna come back with more language, that with a better language on this protection plan. But it won't, we won't take a vote until September. It's not really a deferral, you're right, it's not really a deferral, it's a continuance.
Okay.
To them. But, but staff has been directed in the motion to listen to the discussion we've had and come up with a protective plan based off of what she hears are concerned.
Because that's our only concern.
Well, we're gonna talk about that in two seconds.
Once you vote on the motion that's on the table and you can make.
We're gonna have a little bit more discussion.
You can make additional motions if you like after that.
Okay, Ms. Creasy, can you call roll on that?
Mr. LaHondro?
Aye.
Mr. Soliets?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltenberg?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye, the motion to continue to September 10th carries. Um, based off of the other, uh, conditions and things that were discussed here, is there anything, uh, that you have further discussion, you wanna have further discussion? That's given you pause? For instance, the, uh.
Well, I already addressed the height issue, but, um, that was one of my concerns and then we also haven't talked about how we're gonna exactly mitigate parking because the applicant itself said that what he gave us in this draft that we are reviewing is not definitive, it was just oh, and a roundabout. So how am I supposed to make an informed decision on a, a roundabout or not even a great estimated figure when I already know we've had this discussion about how these projects impact the neighbor, the surrounding neighborhoods? We all, we have the neighbors here talking about it and I just wanted to make that clear since he brought up the point of we're only talking about the, um.
What if I do this? What if we look at these conditions really quick? Kinda look not by head of nod, do we have consensus on them as we go down? So condition one, uh, the special use permit, part A, is no more than one building. Are you consensus with that? Happy with that?
I would scrap it, but I don't think it matters. But I would scrap it because it doesn't matter. But I don't care.
Same.
Okay. How about condition B, the building shall not exceed a height of four stories?
I'm anti.
Same.
I'm four.
Four stories? Four stories?
Or four.
Well, I guess my conflict comes in the actual, the, the zone, because.
Well, the zoning is fifty-two feet.
So is that extra gonna give him five stories? Or are we gonna?
I don't know, I think he's gotta design it and see.
I think the idea is they might be able to squeeze it in, but if they end up with four, they're gonna be pretty huge ceiling heights, right? Like that's.
Twelve-foot ceiling heights?
Yeah.
They could afford.
Well, I mean, yeah, right? But it would be better, though I guess they say for some reason, I don't quite understand why, it doesn't affect the density. But like, to me, it would be better if there were, you know, more apartments in general that were somewhat lower down the market, even though they're gonna be obviously at the top regardless. But like, I mean, it does make a difference if you're building, you know, what's at the top of the waterhouse and, I don't know, what's another pretty high-end terraces?
I guess for me too, keeping into consideration that we talked about preserving the view of a mural, which I totally get that, that's fine, but what about, we often don't take in the context of the, the existing neighbors? Where is their view? We get these big tall massing buildings. What about their view? Their, the, the neighborhood's view is important to you?
I was actually thinking the mural view is a waste of space that shouldn't be used for housing, but.
Well, I was just saying in general, you know, I, I, that's an issue for me when it comes to height. And it's not just on this project, it's on all the projects that we see. So that's not, hang on, but I like four feet, four stories.
Four stories.
Four stories, not four feet, excuse me.
My concern is that, uh, the flexibility will allow a diversity of housing types within the construction, which would promote what we want, uh, what we say we want in the comp plan.
True, but do you really think those diversity of housing types are gonna get us what we really need in the comp plan? Because that's, the people who need the housing that we're referring to and we're spending all of this money on are not even gonna be able to look at these apartments.
This will help very few of the people who need the most help, either way.
Four feet or fifty, yeah, four story.
But the tax revenue you get from it could.
Okay, I, um.
We chose to.
So we have two, it's two, two on this. I'm inclined to stay with the four stories only because of the transition areas that we are talking about in our, uh, in our comprehensive plan as well and having a historical, uh, site next to that. And I don't think anything should be as high as that steeple anyway. I think that's a pretty cool thing to have as part of our skyscraper, so that would be my.
I'm sorry, but I thought that it doesn't actually change the height, or I guess it's two feet?
Two feet.
Two feet. Because it would just be four within the same, right? That's, that's my understanding.
So we're just taking a quick poll, right now we're at three, two, okay. So, the building shall not contain more than fifty-five dwelling units.
Anti, but it, good with me.
Anti, but also met. I don't see any value to it, um, and I see some potential issues with it, but ultimately, the proposal is for fifty-five units.
Okay.
It's the maximum allowed by, you know, a sp- a special use permit anyway. We're not achieving anything, but if it makes people happy, I'm okay with it.
Fifty-five.
Actually, I did have one question on that. Uh, if you multiply the density we're allowing per acre times the acreage, it's fifty-four point something. So, where's the fifty-fifth unit income from?
Round it up. Perfect. That also, that, that specific also relates to the parking and so if we're having that situation where we're bringing in more, so that, for me, fifty-five, that's what's proposed. I'm good with that. Uh, D, building shall not contain space, shall contain space to be occupied and used for retail uses, which shall be located on the ground floor of the building facing West Main Street. The square footage of this retail space shall be at least the minimum required by the city zoning ordinance.
So I have a question about that.
Okay.
So I know often, um, on other projects, we very clearly, um, describe what, what type of retail we wanna see in these spaces. Is this one of those cases? Or is there any use that we would not wanna see?
So, that, what, what, what you're talking about typically is when we're doing a rezoning and people have those uses spelled out and they taken away. With this being a special use permit, I think it'd be anything that's allowed kind of in that district. Does that make sense? It's retail, right, okay. Now, that's a great question, but that's the, kind of the difference there.
Thank you.
Any heartburn about this condition? D?
No, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Soliets?
Fine.
Good?
Yeah, it's fine.
Good, good. Look at that. Got a unison up. Um, underground parking shall be provided within a parking structure constructed underneath the building, provide at least fifty-three spaces serving the use and occupancy of the building. No direct access shall be provided into the underground parking from the building's street wall along West Main Street. Anyone? Mr. Dow? LaHondro? Fine with that?
Assuming we can find a way to do it inside plan?
I know.
Can someone give me a refresher on what the applicant's problem with it was? You guys weren't into that condition?
The template that they put in there for parking doesn't take into account all the specifications that they may need to consider and they didn't include any of the potential, um, credits that they could receive through the ordinance. And so they, they expressed concern with that number, though that's what was on the document. So that's why that came to pass.
I see. Yeah, I mean, I would like to add a clause saying, you know, less, any reductions allowed under the zoning ordinance, cause there's like all these incentives to do extra stuff. Like, you can like donate, in the, in the park modified zone, you like donate to the transportation fund, like a ton of money, which is, for an underground parking spot, it'd be equivalent to like fifty thousand dollars to the transportation fund, um, cause they use it like national benchmarks. So, I would like a clause that allows them to use the incentives in the zoning ordinance that we have.
How does that help the neighborhood?
Thank you.
To have more transit?
Right. Oh, but how, how does that help the neighborhood as it is right now, where, where they can't park as it is?
I mean, it doesn't obviously directly address the concerns, but the incentives we have in the ordinance are with the goal of lessening the traffic problems in the entire city by shifting people to alternative modes of transportation. Which, I mean, you're right that that's not a magic thing where suddenly one day everyone's gonna wake up and stop driving, but like, I mean, we're talking about like two, three people out of fifty-five that maybe we can push to be better and, you know, not, right? Um, particularly because, um, or well, potentially because they have the choice to do in lieu payments. Um, but if they do onsite affordable units, um, you know, people with lower incomes are much more likely to rely on transit. It's true.
It's true, but let's, let's be real. We talking about real-time monitoring, let's be real in the present time. What affordable unit is going on this property?
Oh, only if they're required to, right? Or well, they opted to for the previous.
I asked you a question. What affordable unit do you see going on this property?
You mean, because they're gonna do an in lieu?
What affordable unit do you see going in this property? You were the one who told me about the price points, so you really think that they're gonna have affordable housing?
No, I mean, the ones that are required to under thirty-four twelve. Which is only twenty-four hundred square feet, so it might be one unit, but it might be four of their studio things.
Okay, 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 okay.
They have to.
Alright, alright, so right now, all we're doing, let's just go back to E. Uh, Mr. LaHondro, you, what, what about E for you?
Um, I'm fine with, uh, requiring the full number of spaces that are required.
Okay. Mr. Soliets?
I don't like the, uh, specifying fifty-three. Uh, if they meet the code, I think meeting the code is adequate, otherwise, fine.
What's the difference in the code and what this is? Do, does anybody, we don't know, because we don't know, right? We can't, we don't know, okay.
We do depart the development.
Okay. So, I'd say parking is a question that we're gonna have, okay. Uh, the mass of the building shall be broken down to reflect the multi-parcel massing historically on the side as West Main. Uh, the building and massing refer to historic buildings on either side, is that?
Yeah, the recommendation is good. Um, I would just, and I'm glad to hear the applicant say that, um, the design has a long way to go to, um, meet this recommendation.
Great. Mr. Soliets?
Great.
Bless you.
Ms. Dow? Oh, we're good, okay.
Is this the modulation one?
Yes.
I'm anti, cause the standard has them and I don't think they help.
Okay. Um, and four. There shall be pedestrian engagement with the street with an active, transparent and permeable facade at street level. Mr. Soliets, just start with you.
Four.
Good.
I don't know what it means, but it sounds great. Good.
Good. Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Just one little knit, um, I don't know what a permeable facade is. I know what a permeable paver is, but I don't know what a permeable facade is.
Maybe I should be some more descriptive language added as we come back to.
Or perhaps active and transparent is enough? I don't know what.
Well, permeable, I, I guess is more than just transparent, it's also, um, uh, doors.
Right.
Yeah, access to.
So is there a, is permeable the word you architects use, or is there a different word?
No, well, I know you lawyers, you all figured it out, you have the perfect language, but.
I mean, if there is, this is a common meaning for, in the architectural world, but. I've, I'm picturing rain going right through the front wall of the building.
Yes, uh, I think it's, it's all about, we've talked about street wall openings is what we've talked about in some cases in the past, uh.
Yeah, so, I mean, for it to be just a sheet of glass all the way across the entire length of the building is not what we're.
Access points, is that better?
So, pa- the passage and transparency.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll work on the wording of that one as well for the next time.
Okay, that's covered all of them, do you have any additional that you'd like to add, other than what we've talked? I didn't touch on three again, we beat that to death, so.
I just think we need some I to be, we're gonna force them.
Right.
I just wanna make sure, because it's under thirty-four twelve, if they were to do onsite affordable units, would that fall under the standard operating procedures that the city has adopted at like the home high rent limits?
They would have to meet the criteria that were part of the program. So, it would be plugged into, um, the tool that's put in place that's based on the legislation that would be provided and they would have to meet the criteria for that.
Okay.
And so typically what happens is an applicant will look at the multiple options that they have to choose from and figure out which one works the best in their programming.
But if they do do onsite units, we have those, that set of regulations that Stacey and Bethany wrote up in twenty sixteen or so and then we adopted, so they would fall under those, unlike the proffered ones we hear about sometimes.
Correct, yeah, that's correct. Yes, that's different.
Thanks.
Alright, next one, way on to the next. Do you have everything you need? Okay. Thank you all. Okay. Need a break?
No, I'm alright, I just need to stand up.
I know council's ready to get out of here.
No, let's keep going.
Currently, the ordinance requires two points of access for any development that contains fifty or more dwelling units. This requirement is outdated and does not match current fire code or other engineering and safety standards. The purpose of this amendment, these amendments, are to clarify that access must be designed and construct, constructed in accordance with the standards set out in the city's standards and design manual, and mandatory safety standards, and to eliminate conflicts with those other documents.
Okay.
Who's our?
I'll, I'll start, and, and, and.
Our structural engineer is here for this one.
Yes, we, we have, we have many people supporting, supporting this project, or this item this evening. So to remind you all of, of how this came to, to be a consideration. So at the May Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Trey Stegman requested that the commission consider a text amendment to this section, and he provided some background information concerning that, and you all decided to discuss that at your next work session, or at a, a upcoming work session. And so you all scheduled that for the June work session, and that was held, and you all decided to initiate that. So in this case, there is not a, a specific applicant, because text amendments have to be either initiated through Planning Commission or City Council.
Got it.
So at the, at that meeting, you initiated the review, and then at the, well, actually, you, you asked for it to be initiated, and then at the July ninth meeting, it came forward for that formal initiation. So we've received, we've received some comments today concerning this, and this is kind of one of those things that's a little bit difficult to, to explain, because, well, first of all, the, the access section of the ordinance, as well as many other portions of the ordinance, are problematic. There are updates that need to be made, there are conflicts with existing standards. So since this was brought forward for you all's review, we took a deeper look at that and determined, well, found that the standards exist that would, that would be, create safe and secure situations, but the number that was placed in the section for two entryways with fifty units or, or greater was arbitrarily put in there. There wasn't a specific reason that we could find for that. In consulting of the, the fire code, as well as the standards and design manual, those are the locations where the, the true information needs to come from, and not specifically in the zoning ordinance. And so with that number in the zoning ordinance, we, in, in some cases, it could limit the situation where fire requests something different, or traffic needs something different based on safety standards. So we brought this forward after we've had the work session and review. We do, we do want to be clear that this wasn't pertaining to a specific development. We looked at this code section independently of that. However, we did anticipate that, that we'd have, we would have some concern from the community, because there are a number of developments throughout the community where the concern would, could result. And so we, we did anticipate those. We've provided some background on that so far, and we plan to do some more tonight. So I don't know if there's anything, Brennan, you wanna add at this point, or if we wanna address questions as you all have them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it a little bit here. So I just wanted to, to, I guess, reiterate what, what Missy said, that, you know, this, we, we did go through, staff reviewed this, fire reviewed this. The, the code that we have, as you said, is arbitrary. We have language within the draft standards and design manual that should be coming before you all, and council later this, this fall, this year, that addresses some of these access issues from a traffic management standpoint, and then the fire code already addresses it from the health and safety aspect of it. So there, there's kind of the two reasons for this. The, when I, as a traffic engineer, I'm looking at this, the, the code that we currently have is restrictive, because it, it, all it is looking at is the dwelling units. It's the only thing that it's taking into consideration. It's not taking into consideration whether it's a corner lot, it's not taking into consideration, you know, other buildings that are around it, you know, what road it's coming out on to, is it coming out on to twenty-nine versus, you know? So it's just, it, it doesn't give me the flexibility to kind of assess these projects on a case-by-case basis that I think they deserve. And so that was kind of why I'm in favor and, and kind of worked to, to put this together.
Really quick, I wanna question, and then I wanna clarify something real quick. Ms. Creasy, since we do not have an applicant?
Yes.
Could we open public hearing for the benefit of council? And then we could have more discussion after that, and then.
Totally fine.
How do, how do you all feel about that? I, I know how council feels about that. Go lock Rory in that bathroom. I'm just kidding. But really quickly on this, this states that, as I read this, this is outdated from the fire, current fire code.
Correct.
Is current fire co, but current fire code, people would, they would still be reviewing any site plan for any amount of dwellings.
They would, yes, fire, the fire department, the fire code official would be reviewing it. It's fire code, appendix D, and there's several sections. So again, this, this only applies to the, you know, how many dwelling units, but the fire code actually speaks to commercial and industrial developments, to multifamily, to one or two family. So there's, there's more, it's, it's more, there's more information in the fire code than what our current zoning code even provides.
And they review all site plans?
They review all site plans.
Thank you. Any questions before we have public hearing?
I have one.
Okay.
We've received a lot of pu- of public comment from people in the Belmont neighborhood, concerned that there was a, a relationship to a, a specific project in Belmont, which I think is currently under proposal. I don't think it's, I think, I think it's a by right. Would this affect that? Would that change it? Is there a relationship between that specific project and this specific proposal?
I'd have to look at it, I mean, the fire code official would have to look at it from, from their point of view. From my point of view, it'll still require multiple access points, so I don't know with that particular project that this code change would affect anything from my point of view. It's, it's gonna require two, at least two points of access, whether this changes or not.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. At this time, we will open the public comment. Since there's no applicant, you guys, if you wanna speak, you signed up, good.
He's the first one.
So three, three minutes, and I've opened the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners Trey Stegman, Management Services Corporation, as I mentioned to you before, when I brought this to your attention in May, represent numerous property owners, numerous clients in the city of Charlottesville from a development perspective. This actually came to our attention very surprisingly in February of this year during a pre-application meeting with the city staff, where we were proposing a project that otherwise was a, a by right use project of approximately ninety units, and were told that because of our site plan and because of this access management zoning code, we'd actually be restricted to no more than forty-nine units. That obviously was a surprise to us in a city that is severely lacking in the number of units that we need to support the existing and future growth of Charlottesville. Beyond that, it also came to our attention by doing some limited research that over the past dozen years, at least nine projects of new construction development type have been approved, where this code was not enforced for whatever reasons. But it, it certainly was peculiar to us that we were being asked to, you know, limit our proposal to this zoning ordinance. And then further, the staff has done a great job of, of kind of digging in here, and I think agreeing that the arbitrary number of no more than fifty units without two points of public access or, or access period is just not, not really practical for, for urban-type development. And so we appreciate the, the staff, we appreciate your suggestion of a work session that we had last couple months ago, where we felt like a lot of things were put on the table, and we thought like this zoning text amendment was a very good idea. The staff, including the city attorney's office, has come forward with a solution here that, you know, kind of corrects a, an unenforced, previously unenforced situation, and one that frankly doesn't make any sense. And to Brendan's point, having the staff analyze projects that are brought forward on a case-by-case basis, particular to access management. We're not talking about fire, we're not talking about public safety, those are all things that are addressed in other departments and other ways. This is purely about access management, and we ask you to support this zoning text amendment, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this application that hasn't signed up?
My name is Kat Meyer, and I'm at two oh eight Douglas Avenue. And if you put the amount of consideration to all of the applicants that come forward looking at different access that you just did to the last project, I have complete trust and faith, because you really took your time, you went through all the nuance, you protected the neighborhood, and you really listened to the applicant. So kudos to you all. I just came to really figure out what is this with the access, to be educated. I think in some ways, there's a lot of contra folks in Belmont, but we just really wanna be your allies. You know, we're looking at development, it is our hood, we moved there because twenty years ago, we could afford it, there was diversity, it's changing. So we just really wanna be your ally. So if you hear anybody coming from Belmont, don't get nervous. And the thing is, it's just the safety. I think climate's changing. So my thought was, there's a lot more emergencies, there's a lot more storms, there's a, this might be an older standard. But dating, I think we have to look forward, you know, into the future, that we do need easier access. We need to have people to get out, we need to have folks getting in to help out. So I think when I hear that each one will be considered by the fire department, each one will be taken at its own consideration, then I just think you all have both sides and have a heck of a job. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mark Carrick. I'm concerned that, basically, that this could be opening the floodgate to a lot of a development that's on the books right now that are being required to, that two or three entry points and going down to one entry point. Use example as one on Avon Street. Currently, I understand that there may be two entry points for it, but could just end up being changed. Anybody that's tried to go from that area over there to Avon Street on the Belmont Bridge and with these development that's planned for that area, if that does get done as one entry point at some point in order to accommodate the development, you know, it's gonna really be a headache trying to get out of there in a long, long wait. And it's not just a question of emergency vehicles, and emergency vehicles being able to, you know, get to the project and get out of there, but it's also, you know, convenience factor for the people that are there and have to deal with the, the traffic situations. It was mentioned about the one in Belmont that Capshaw's doing, I think it's called River Run or something like that, but I know that they're having difficulty trying to have two entry points, and so could we be looking at the potential of eventually going down to one point? So I personally would like to just see it more done as a situation where it's looked at and counted on each individual merit as to what we have versus, you know, just doing a blank change to one entry point. Thank you.
Please come up. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I just wanted to call your attention to paragraph A of the proposed text, which I think sufficiently addresses the comments that were just raised. It continues to provide discretion to the city's traffic engineer to require additional access points. At the beginning, the new length, the new text you see in red says, "Each entrance onto any street for vehicular traffic to and from a development shall be designed to reduce or prevent congestion in the public streets, minimize conflict and friction with vehicular traffic on the public street and on-site, minimize conflict with pedestrian traffic, and provide continuous and unobstructed access for emergency purposes such as fire, rescue, police, et cetera." And then it says that, to these ends, the traffic engineer in the review of the site plan may specify the type, or excuse me, the number, type, and location of access points on a public street. And it goes on to retain significant amount of discretion, just as Mr. Duncan said, the flexibility for him and his colleagues to review each application on a case-by-case basis, to determine in the context of that project, in that location, that neighborhood, those existing traffic conditions, what makes the most sense. I apologize, I don't know if I stated my name when I started, Valerie Long. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I'll read the rate. Thank you for the work you do, because I know it's, it was a long night already, so. My name is Julia Williams, I live in Belmont, and I also recently became aware of this, so I was trying to quickly read through it. And as I was reading through it, I recalled the quarterly meeting that the neighborhood associations had with the city manager and staff. I happened to stand in for our president at Belmont Carlton, and when I was looking through my notes and summarizing all the critical issues, the thread that was most common was concern about development pressure. We didn't dive into it deeply. I think it was probably, for the most part, conflicts between residential and commercial development, but I think density, housing density also creates pressures that are very similar when you have lower-density residential neighborhoods, so I just wanted to put that out there. I also think that in considering this proposal, it makes me think that a long-range planner is still a position we very much need in the city. So I wanna put that out there again, to encourage the city manager to consider that. A couple specifics. In section A, each entrance, let's see, the new text says, "Then designed to reduce or prevent congestion in public areas, minimize conflict and friction with vehicular traffic on public streets and on-site." Why doesn't it say conflicts or friction with pedestrian or multimodal transportation? We see in our neighborhood, in Belmont, some intersections that may work better for traffic, but we're actually getting a lot of complaints and concern about safety of pedestrians and other kinds of traffic. Why can't we build that into this language as well, since we are trying to be a multi, multimodal community? I was also a little surprised that it's the traffic engineer who has all the review on this, and maybe I haven't read through the whole thing, maybe it still comes before everybody for approval, but if there's a long-range planner, that person also might have insight into how these intersections and changes in density and vehicular access affect long-range plans. So I think that ties into it. Section E was deleted, which I think is just about onsite parking. Is that replaced somewhere in here? I didn't see how that, I, I, it was a quick read, so I may have just missed it. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this zoning text amendment? Seeing that, then I will close the public hearing and bid adieu to our counselors. Have a good evening, and open this up for our discussion.
I think one thing that we talked about in our pre-meeting that is, I think we, we may have covered this, my computer was going, that's why I missed it, is that regardless of whether we vote to do the zoning text amendment change, that none of the language or whatever we have in the amendment supersedes what fire and rescue had, already have in place. And even if fire and rescue say, hey, we can access this with one, this, this property with one access point, if the traffic engineer comes back and says, but this is still not safe, then that does not supersede what we have in the zoning text amendment. And I just wanted us to be clear about that, because I think that makes a huge difference.
I, I'll just point out really quick that the fourth line down does say that the minimize conflict with pedestrian traffic.
I do like the idea of adding multi, bike, I guess.
Scooters.
Scooters, yeah.
Scooters. As you as a traffic engineer, is that something you automatically look at anyway? Or, I mean, is that kind of unwritten, or is it something we should add somewhere?
I mean, if you would like to change it to multimodal, I have, I have no issue with changing it to multimodal.
Minimize conflict with pedestrian traffic and multimodal?
I mean, I would just take out the pedestrian, it's just multimodal.
Multimodal?
Yeah. I mean, that covers, yeah, all modes.
Whatever Rory decides to come. Segways?
Sorry?
Segways?
Segways?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So for vehicular traffic, we're saying on the public street and on-site, and then we're just saying pedestrian and multimodal. I guess it doesn't say not in both places, so I guess it's fine.
Mr. Solais, did you have something?
This is astonishing progress. We were, you know, it, it's kind of a rec, we, we should be enforcing our code, and we should have enforceable code, and this is, you know, a big pain point, and I'm, I'm very grateful to see action on it.
I'm also gra- very grateful for the requesters that come forth and take their time for us to be able to work through this in a back-and-forth type of manner, and, and ask all our questions, because clearly, as you've seen. because clearly, as you've seen, when presented for the first time, we have a lot of questions. So thank you all for taking your time to do that. We, we hope that in the future, we have more of that. Mr. Heaton, you're here just in time to make a motion.
Remove adjournment.
Let's make a motion on this one first, and then I do think we have some other people.
I'd like to make a motion.
Perfect.
I move to recommend approval of this zoning text amendment to amend and reordain section 34-896 amendments to the zoning ordinance. What? On the basis that the changes would serve the interests of public necessity, convenience, general public welfare, and/or good zoning practice. I think that's supposed to be 896 access.
Would you like to add with the following amendment to add multimodal?
With the following amendment to add multimodal traffic after pedestrian.
I'd like to second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Creasy, we call Rome.
Mr. Lohendro?
Aye.
Mr. Solais?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Present.
Yes or no? Okay, okay. Mr. Stolzberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye.
Thank you all.
The guys out there, they were not happy. Deferred.
Continue.
Just going to point out that my question about whether he's in a hurry seems a lot more relevant.
I am going to ask that we take five minutes. I have, okay, let's just take a second stretch, and then we'll come back to the preliminary discussion of kappa, kappa, gamma on Rugby Road. Thank you.
I say, blue is my color. Blue is my other color. I'm going to take like 30 seconds. These, these guys. No, this guy right here. Oh. No, this is, no, this is hers. Yeah, I don't know if it's something. I was actually in the meeting room.
10 minutes. Where's Ms. Dow? Could you look down the hall, see if Ms. Dow is close by? Stepped out.
No, she's on the floor.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay.
Laow sent me an article, 1924, from our newspaper about Mr. Holsinger falling from the window of.
Oh, my gosh.
Taking down the bunting, and he slipped, and, but he grabbed the telephone wire way down, and that's probably his fault.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you, Laow. This is fantastic. Clearly enough, safety saved it for me.
Put an apron around that thing, nobody falls out. Well, let's go ahead, okay, and get started, and she can catch up with us. Tonight's a background, I mean, a preliminary discussion regarding an upcoming application on 503 Rugby Road. And would you like to give us some background on that?
Sure. Yeah, so Joey Winner, city planner with NDS. So this item is a special use permit request for a sorority with up to 37 residents at 503 Rugby Road. The property zone R3H, so it's historic, and it already has a valid SUP for a sorority of up to 36 residents. So with this request, the applicant will ask to increase the allowed density by one resident, and they will also be asking for relief from front and side setback requirements. This is preliminary discussion. Some questions to consider as you review this request. What's, what is the impact on the neighborhood of allowing the additional resident? Are there measures the applicant can take to mitigate this sorority's impact on the neighborhood? And what's the impact of granting modifications to front and side setback requirements? This property is in a historic district, so BAR will be making a recommendation on this SUP request, and they will do that at their August meeting next week. Currently, this SUP is on track for a public hearing at your September 10 meeting. With that, Ms. Erin Miggin is here tonight to present on behalf of the applicant, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Can you steer the BAR from seismic data con?
No.
Conversation?
I cannot. I'm sorry.
Good.
Good evening. I'm going to go as quickly as possible and talk as fast as possible to, in the.
I want to see this.
To get us out of here.
This is not it, no.
So it's slightly reordered from the application packet, just to be more relevant and quick this evening. But same content, for the most part. So a summary is that there's no change in the zoning from R3, and the use is staying the same as a residential boarding house, a sorority, already granted through an existing special use permit. We're asking for one additional resident. It's technically considered one dwelling unit. And the reason for this is that the building is currently functionally obsolete. They need to expand to meet their required needs. I'll go into that in a minute. The current architecture doesn't reflect the character that they'd desired by the client. And so as part of the renovation, we'll be modifying the architectural character. And we're dealing with a very irregular trapezoidal site, and so we're asking for setback modifications to assist us in achieving the architectural character that they would like. And I'll get into that in a second. The top row of images here is the existing footprint of the building on each level. The lower line is the proposed condition with this color pink being addition, this color pink being outdoor space on the different levels. This is infill, where there's already building above on the existing condition, but we're infilling in that location, otherwise the addition is going to the rear. And this slide is trying to describe the functional issues inside the building that are why we're asking for some, why we're going through the process of making these modifications. The rooms, the dorm room, or bedrooms at the moment are approximately nine feet wide, which is by 15 foot seven, which is smaller than a standard UVA dorm room. They require custom-sized beds that are smaller than a standard twin-sized bed, and they don't meet all the, the current accessibility requirements. And so in the course of renovating, we're removing all the demising walls between the six bedrooms on the front and actually expanding the width of each bedroom to be approximately 11 feet wide, which allows us to meet all those requirements and not have custom-sized beds. And this changes the facade significantly when we start to work through the architectural character. The other major reason for the change is that their current chapter room does not seat enough of the members at the same time for their chapter meetings. And a fireplace currently exists in the middle of the plan that really limits the chapter room size. And so removing that is a major piece of the renovation to expand the size of that room. And in addition to that, expanding the size of the room to the rear, we're also relocating the front entry. Currently, there is no front door to Rugby Road. The door exists only to Lambeth Lane, which is the side street, which is privately owned by UVA. And so we want to put a new entry point facing Rugby Road, which we believe will enhance the streetscape and the connection to the street life, as well as create a better organization in the plan, as well as better circulation. So I'm going to skip through where this is located, but it is right on the city limit line, just past UVA on Rugby Road. O'Neill Hall is to its left, and Pike is to its north, which is a project you've seen relatively recently for Zero Rugby Road, which is the vacant lot just beside that. It is in the historic district. It is a non-contributing structure, but obviously, we're still going in front of BAR next week. The building was built in 79, and is basically 40 years old. The, these are pictures of the existing structure. Again, the front facade has no connection to the street. The front yard isn't being utilized at all. It does not add to the character of the streetscape at all. The, this is a close-up of the front facade. points around the building and to show you that currently the parking is coming in and pulling and facing the adjacent property. And again, there's, uh, uh, no use of the front yard. So the proposed renovation is shown here. Again, this piece is infill and this piece is addition to the rear. This is the first floor plan with that front entry point coming off the street, uh, through the course of a sunken terrace condition and a front porch, which again projects into that setback and that's what, part of why we're asking for relief. The building was built right up against the side yard setbacks. Um, we're fine in the rear. And I'll get into, these are enlarged plans. I'm gonna skip over this for the, um, time management, but I can answer questions about any that should you want me to come back to explaining any piece of it. So again, five bedrooms across the front, which changes things, um, on the facade. The roof condition. This is the existing front elevation with the six space across the front representing those six, uh, bedrooms. This is the proposed. So in addition to putting in, in addition out the rear, we're also, we're also going up a story. Um, we're adding that front porch with the front entry point. Um, in addition, we have some side, uh, perpulas along Lambeth Lane to connect to that side street. Here's the side elevation on Lambeth Lane. Again, that's the front door that's in a recessed condition underneath the existing building. Here's the proposed condition. So we're still maintaining an entrance point there, but it's not the main entry any longer. Um, this is the existing stairwell exit from the stair tower. That's this volume that exists currently. We have another point here and the parking is occurring underneath this overhang. This is the north elevation facing Pica. Um, the previous conditions of the SUP restricted any windows on this elevation, which we'd like to revisit. Um, this is our proposed elevation. The, this first window is connecting, uh, level into the House Director's suite in this front corner. And of course, this is the service entrance from the parking lot in the rear. The rear elevation, the proposed rear elevation, which has two stacked porches, which we believe helps erode at that corner, um, towards the street and reduces the overall massing and scale of the building. This is the photograph, obviously towards the entry and that's the proposed modified condition. Here's a view of the front again with the proposed condition. From the corner, this one hasn't been updated quite as much, but the trees aren't actually there. We've, the other two are updated to the landscape plan, which is here. So getting into the setback relief, um, the, these were the setbacks at the time of the original SUP. Our current setbacks, which we just realized the side yard setback is the minimum and we'll have to recalculate that, but these are the setbacks that we're requesting. The rear yard, we're not actually asking for any change. The other two, it's not to add gross square footage to the building, but instead to provide the character defining conditions that help change that character and, and provide scale, um, porches and roof eaves. So here's a diagram that illustrates what we believed were the current setbacks in existing building footprint. The black line here is the, the proposed building footprint, um, and you can see the roof overhang going past that, which is the, uh, why we're requesting these modified setbacks. And this is getting a little detailed, was more an exhibit for BAR, but why are we proposing the, the roof overhangs as we are? One is, the basic reason is the proportion. It's correct for the proportion of the building, but in addition, um, it helps to shield the facade from heat gain in the summer and whereas this would be the maximum allowed under the current zoning ordinance and same goes for the front porch. Your zoning ordinance current, currently reads that it has to be both uncovered and unenclosed, which would, uh, mean that a porch would not be allowed, um, which is why we're asking. So this is a rendering with the eaves cut back, which we're not requesting, but just to show you the difference. That's again with it as requested.
All right. So we have some talking points, uh, items for discussion. Uh, you wanna go through these one at a time? Do you have any questions for the applicant or, um, city staff?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, have you done a, uh, historical research on the property?
Yes.
What was here before this?
Um, before the existing building was a boarding house that was owned by Ms. May Speed and she, uh, I don't, I'm not exactly sure how many residents lived in it, but, um, it, she was sick and I guess moved back to New York. It fell into dilapidation and eventually people got into it and were setting fires in it. The whole building caught on fire. Um, the city actually razed the building, um, and Capicapagama stepped in and, and purchased the parcel and developed the proposal for that, for the building that currently exists there now. And we have a member of KKG that, that's here tonight, but not her, but her, um, associate has that story firsthand because she was in that first class that helped to establish the house.
Helpful. Thank you. Uh, you mentioned the front yard is not, uh, usable, is meaning that the, the sorority cannot currently use it as it's currently configured or just not contributing to the?
Not that it's not usable, it's not utilized, I guess would be a better word, that there's no connection to that front yard. Um, it's currently just grass. The landscaping has been left to sort of overgrow and conceal the building because the building doesn't represent the architectural character that the client would prefer. And so I think it's sort of not connected to the street at all at the moment and just kind of missing.
Thank you.
Um, so my concern, or my only concern was, uh, on the side setbacks facing Pica, I know from experience that there's a very tight driveway there. Did you say that the building footprint doesn't actually change? It's just the roof eaves that, so it wouldn't be affected? Or yeah, I should not remember. It kinda looked like that.
Correct. So here is the diagram. Um, this is the property line. That drive is on their property, not on, on this property.
Okay.
And the current, the building corner, this line right here is the line of the existing footprint. You can see how it lines up with the existing footprint line right there, which is that line. So we're not mod, we're not expanding that direction at all, except for the eve.
Okay.
And a pilaster at the corner to conceal existing pilaster conditions that are happening there.
Little odd. Had to say, we had a complex about not having any bricks, so I'm shocked to see you removing yours in a house that only Jody could love.
So we're not removing the brick. Um, the, the building will still be a, a brick facade for the first two stories. It's just painted white.
Gotcha.
And the reason for painting it white is because we're meshing old and new facades together and we would never get a very compatible. It would be a patchwork condition.
You have nothing for that? No red brick?
No. I had my say during the.
Okay.
This, this doesn't have anything to, to do with my.
This is definitely a different type of red brick.
But I find it interesting that the, our wrapping sorority girls are gonna wrap in this, uh, traditional historic setback.
And the applicant is like, what are you talking about?
You say rap?
Uh, I don't explain.
I, I have a question for, from staff.
Okay. I swear. It's not late enough for us to get punchy.
I will not be rapping.
Neither will I sadly. I didn't prepare anything at this time, but next time maybe. The, um, the setbacks, as I understand it, the idea is to kind of get at an aesthetic control, which I think is redundant since we have architectural design control in this area. Is there, so setting aside aesthetics, is there a health, safety or public welfare benefit to the specific setbacks as currently laid out to this specific location?
You mean the requirements of the district? Um, I haven't. I don't have a compelling.
So setbacks are sometimes, uh, uh, let me help out with this. Setbacks are sometimes, uh, uh, utilized and, and you look at fire, uh, the building code. So at a certain, between, if you are only three feet from the next building, you've gotta have a specific fire rating even on the eaves. If you are, uh, the structures are, you're five or six, I can't remember right now. I have all this written down. Then it's a different, and there's the opening, ten, you can't have openings. So the setbacks are generally related to building code. So.
And there, there's a site plan that will be associated with this and the building official will review it and it will have to conform to the building codes.
Thank you.
Do you have a site plan on there or just a, an overall shot of this with the new setbacks and the new overhangs and the structure to the right or the, the other house to the right? Do you have that? Showing those distances or?
The distance to the adjacent property?
Do, not the adjacent property. Do you have any type of, any type of site plan like that and the adjacency of the different, of the next, uh, structure?
You mean that? That shows a little bit.
So what do you think that, taking into the, the overhang into consideration, what do you think the distance is on that?
Between the two buildings?
Mm-hmm.
It's probably still easily fifteen to twenty feet.
Okay.
Well, yeah, that part of the Pica building is also like that left porch. Where the, yeah, the top of it is gonna be well below where the eve start.
It, it doesn't matter. It's a plain thing.
Yep.
Yeah. So, all right. Okay. Okay. Um, any further questions? And is there, so for you all, the question is, what is the impact of allowing one additional resident over the previously approved, uh, quantity of thirty-six allowed by special use permit? Are there measures the applicant should take to mitigate any adverse impacts on the neighborhood based off of the one additional unit? I mean.
Couldn't fit anymore?
Why was this added?
So you, a whole new story, but only one more.
There's a height limit, so that would be, have to be added.
Yeah. So the current house has, I believe, twenty residents in it?
Twenty-one with the House Director.
Twenty-one with the House Director now as, as it is. With this expansion, they are going to thirty. Um, or.
Thirty-six.
Yeah. Thirty, thirty-seven. They're, they're increasing the, so, but the, the, um, SUP from nineteen seventy-eight authorized them to have thirty-six residents. So they could go to thirty-six now, under the current SUP. That's valid.
I'm, I'm guessing you've read the old SUP?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why thirty-six is, what's special about that number?
I would say maybe that's what they asked for back then. I wasn't around back then, but, but we'll see.
So, uh, items for discussion. You have any problem with the one unit that is being requested? No? No? No?
I have a question. Sorry. Just because thirty-seven just seems like a really odd number.
So maybe that's just, they're operating if it is.
There's nine bedrooms on each floor that can be double occupancy, plus the House Director makes it thirty-seven.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay.
I feel better.
Okay, good. Uh, next question that we, they are asking us to discuss is what is the impact of granting modifications to the front and yard setbacks to permanent ornamental features of roof overhangs and covering porches? BAR is gonna be taking a look at this. Um, do we have any recommendations, uh, to adding, uh, for? What I'd like for us to do is if you see anything tonight, let's hash this out so that we don't have a redo of our seismic conversation. It was seismic in nature.
No, I really, I wish, I wish Bill were here, cause Bill works in the, uh, building next door, but I really do like everything about this. Um, it makes it, I mean, the old building was, it just was out of place. Um, and this makes it so much more like all the other, 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 um, houses on Rugby. I like where they're going.
Nothing? Mr. Gondro, please talk about red brick. Please.
And I'm glad they get red, they get this red brick.
Nothing?
I was gonna ask them if we could have their bricks.
They're gonna paint them.
Uh, it's, it's, so just like, just because Jose, uh, said something, um, I have to, to, uh, point out something I, I said during the BAR that, um, when this building was being constructed in seventy-nine, the one that's there now, I was in graduate school and walked by the front of this every day and this was a notable building at the time. Uh, Johnson Craven designed it and it was an attempt to, uh, transition from very traditional buildings to something that was a bit modern. Um, and so it was, uh, a significant building locally. I mean, it's, it's no landmark. But, um, it's just, I've obviously, I've obviously lived too long. That, you know, we're going backwards. Anyway, that's as much as I'll say. But it, it, the Johnson Craven building was a notable building at the time and, and was, uh, was found to be interesting and appreciated by, um, the architects that walked in front of it. But to put that in perspective, I've heard Jody give that exact same spiel about five fifteen.
Were the architects wearing bell bottoms?
I'm sure.
As a matter of fact, we were.
So, all right.
Disco that year.
All right, guys. So that, so that I wanna make sure what we get. Um, have you had any chance to come up with a list of conditions you all think could be addressed so that we can kinda look at, have that conversation so that we can more clearly think about the language of?
So as the new guy, that's the benefit of having tonight, there is, there are conditions on the old nineteen seventy-eight SUP. I would say most of them are not relevant to today. Um, I'll do a staff report and I'll get input, input from other reviewers and we will come up with conditions. If there's a, maybe a sorority or fraternity that has been approved the SUP recently that you like the conditions from, I can work off that. Um, otherwise, it'll just be staff going through it and thinking about it, me as the planner and other staff as they see fit to come up with the conditions.
But you didn't have any thoughts based off of noise or impacts on?
Not at this point. I'll have a full staff report for next, for the public hearing if that's next month and there will be that analysis in it.
I can't think of one off the top of my head that we've done recently to, to look back at the conditions. I, I mean, I know that parking is obviously a con, concern and noise is a concern.
Well, they already occupy.
But to put that in perspective, I've heard Jody give that exact same spiel about five fifteen.
Were the architects wearing bell bottoms?
I'm sure.
As a matter of fact, we were.
So, all right.
I would have disco that year.
All right, guys. So that, so that I wanna make sure what we get. Have you had any chance to come up with a list of conditions you all think could be addressed? So that we can kind of look at, have that conversation? So that we can more clearly think about the language of...
So as the new guy, that's the benefit of having, tonight, there is, there are conditions on the old nineteen-seventy-eight SUP. I would say most of them are not relevant to today. I'll do a staff report, and I'll get input from other reviewers, and we will come up with conditions. If there's a, maybe a sorority or fraternity that has been approved the SUP recently that you like the conditions from, I can work off that. Otherwise, it'll just be staff going through it and thinking about it, me as the planner, and other staff as they see fit to come up with the conditions.
But you didn't have any thoughts based off of noise or impacts on today?
Not at this point. I'll have a full staff report for next, for the public hearing, if that's next month, and there will be that analysis in it.
I can't think of one off the top of my head that we've done recently to, to look back at the conditions. I mean, I know that parking is obviously a concern, and noise is a concern.
But, don't they already occupy though?
We mean why it's noise, seriously?
Construction noise.
Yeah, yeah, but like, sororities can't have parties, like, public parties anyway.
Okay. I'm just saying in the past, we had a noise concern about the band fraternity on, remember that one we did, not Jody?
The band fraternity is what?
Why can't sororities have parties?
It's not gonna exist.
That can't, that can't last.
This is not what we're gonna...
Yeah, that's, that's...
Not, not...
Not in this day and age.
Let her talk, let her talk, no doubt.
So UVA's Inner Fraternity Council, IFC, right? Is the, both governs both all the fraternities and all the sororities. They set rules about what can occur at a fraternity house versus a sorority house. Parties are not allowed at sorority houses, along with a myriad of other conditions that are different between the two. In addition to that, the National Chapter has rules and regulations about what can and can't occur in the house. And so not, and then on top of that, there's a House Director that obviously, that their own house corporation has guidelines and rules in place for what they want to occur locally in their chapter house. So there's multiple levels of oversight.
I will behave.
This is only gonna get you in trouble, Jody.
Quiet during this conversation.
One, one other point is that we held our neighborhood meeting last, last week, last Tuesday. Two people, only two people showed up. Both were in favor of it. We didn't have any...
You didn't serve beer.
There's no party.
The, the only comment that I think was relevant that came out of that was where are we gonna park the scooters? So, we, we will consider that before we come back to you.
Okay. Any other thing, okay?
So in terms of impacts, I'm not very concerned. I, I do see potential issues with trip generation and, and parking. You know, not huge for, you know, one thirty-seventh out of a... But something I would like to consider is bicycle facilities. Just to, you know, judge people in a certain direction, could be useful.
There is a requirement for bicycle facilities in the, I believe it's thirty-four eight eighty-one for fraternities and sororities.
One step ahead of me, that's my problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One bike space per five hundred square feet of bedroom area.
Do you have from us all you need? We could, I'm sure go on and on and on.
You're welcome to leave.
Right. Do you have anything else you'd like for us to know?
No, it's really resting, I think it sounds like with BAR's recommendation.
That's a whole other, yeah. As long as we don't get into, you know, I don't know what else. Again, I would just take a look at and think about that, those conditions. We did that, I guess it was called a service sorority or fraternity not that long ago, and I think it was on JPA, where they extended by one bedroom.
There was a chemi, chemistry...
Was it chemistry?
Yes, a chemistry sorority.
Chemistry.
Fraternity or something like that, yes.
So there, and there was conditions on there, but, and for some reason, I think we did speak a long time about noise for the chemistry students getting all rowdy.
Yeah, and something I'd say is for the...
That was a structural issue. They had a structural porch that was very large.
For parties.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so...
But they're not under the same rules, like, they...
I, I understand, I, I know, but they're also the chemistry students.
Okay, now it's coming back to you.
I, the Pica was...
Anyway, anything else? Mr. Gates? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Sully Yates, you had something you wanted to...
Yes, I did, I suddenly recall. The, I was asked by a professor at VCU to speak on a panel I think in the next couple of months about Charlotte School's efforts on affordable housing, at which I thought, oh sure, talking to a class or something, fine, whatever. Turns out, it is a Virginia APA event. This is very official, so I wanted to put you on alert. I will note that I will be sharing my own views. I cannot read your minds, but I will do my best to do you proud before the Noble Virginia APA.
Thank you.
Could we impose upon you to send us out the date that you'll be talking to? Do we have that information aware?
That would be honored.
Thank you.
All right. Do it. I'd like to make a motion. We'll see you all on September tenth.
No, 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 no.
Wait, no, we're just gonna...
Thursday, Thursday.
The next official meeting will be, a public hearing is September tenth. We will see you all...
Were you summoned to this meeting?
I think so. Summoned to a meeting on Septem, no.
It's tomorrow, Thursday. The Thursday meeting is a joint work session.
Yes. Yes, it was that. And then on September fourth, right before the other meeting, we'll see you again.
Oh.
Yes.
I will not be here, or if I do, I'm like pop in, pop out thirty minutes. I have somewhere to be at seven. Thank you. Anyone else, everyone else planning for Thursday generally?
I had the BZA meeting, so how that goes, who knows, who knows? So I may be late.
I am, but there's a, is there a meeting the last week in August? What's the next meeting?
The twenty-seventh.
I'm not gonna be here for that. I'm gonna be on vacation, or I'm gonna be somewhere else.
Okay.
It's a city space.
I mean, I would have been there. Yes, I'll be stuck. I'll be there, but I'm not... I'll be in the back, hanging out. I mean, no.